Good evening, El Segundo. We are going to get started. We will have an invocation led by our city clerk, Tracy Weaver, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Protem. Oh, I'm sorry, no, Councilmember Pimentel. And then we've got some special presentations, so if you could all please rise. Thank you.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Councilmember Pimentel. All right, first up, we have a presentation. We've got three new El Segundo police officers that we're really excited to have here tonight, probably some of their friends and family members as well. Chief Whalen is probably be coming up.
All right, good morning, Council, Mayor. It is my honor to introduce to you our three newest police officers, and when I say newest, our newest academy graduates. So unfortunately, they're not new to the numbers that I like to brag about when we come up here, but they've been on the books for a while, but they just finished the Rio Hondo Police Academy about a week and a half ago, very difficult police academy, and now they enter what would be even arguably the more challenging phase, which is their field training program. So standing to my immediate right is Brandon Mendoza. By the way, you probably recognize all of them. And what is significant about this is this is the first time we did an internal-only recruitment for police officer. And so Brandon Mendoza is a cadet with us. He was a cadet with us. He's been with us for about a year and a half, and he graduated from Cal State LA where he got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And like I said, he's been a cadet with us actually a little bit longer than that. So for about the last two and a half years, he's been with us. Next to Brandon is Michael Drowhan. He's been with us a very long time. You guys probably know Michael Drowhan as well.
Mostly from Parking Tickets. No, just kidding, Michael.
Well, I mean, to be fair, you probably know all of them from Parking Tickets. You don't have to turn red, that's okay. But Michael Drowhan is an El Segundo pretty much native. He was going around and going -- the police officers that have been here a while tell me he used to show up on his, you know, tricycle or bike or whatever with a police scanner, and he knew he always wanted to be an El Segundo police officer. So it's really good when we can bring these hometown kids back and police the agents or the cities that they grew up in. And then lastly is Joanna Ramirez, who's next to Michael Drowhan. She was our police service officer, a jailer with us for several years. Prior to that, she was a police cadet, so she was also out riding Parking Tickets. And Joanna also has a bachelor's degree from Cal State University Dominguez Hills. So they're all super excited to be with us, and we can't wait to get them out in training. They don't, to my knowledge, play basketball, but this guy runs, so when we get a Baker to Vegas team back again, you'll see him doing wind sprints on Grand Hill. All right. So I'll turn the mic over if you want to just say a couple words.
Counsel, I'm very happy to be here tonight. It's an honor to work for such a great city. My goal is to continue building on the positive relationship that this department has spent decades building, and to leave a positive impact on the community, and just to keep building a great foundation that we currently have.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Like Chief said, I'm happy to be here, be back in this capacity, just to build and grow and help in any way I can. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me today. It's a privilege to be back in El Segundo and continue to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you all. Should we do a photo, Chief? Let's give him a round of applause.
One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three. Stay right here where you are.
It's giving back.
Oh, really? That's great. Thank you, Chief. That's great. Great progress. Great hires. Okay, next up, we have recognition for the citywide website, which has been culmination of several years of effort, and I think Barbara Voss is gonna -- or Charles Mallory. Charles? Hey, Charles.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Thank you for the support on this very important project. You know, what I would like to say is thank you to the city staff that participated in the actual project, the website project. Thank you to the website team, the members, and all of the people that are here and/or may not be here tonight, so thank you. Just a quick recap, we launched in January 28th. January 28th, we made it public announcement on Valentine's Day, which was last Friday, February 14th, okay? In addition to the city's main website, we do have four robust information of what we call subsites. Those subsites are El Segundo Fire Department, El Segundo Police Department, El Segundo Public Library, and El Segundo Recreation and Parks. Just a real quick recap, what a subsite means is that people can go directly to these pages directly without having to navigate through the actual city. So if you want to go directly to the fire, you can. Directly to the library, you can as well, okay? The website was obviously a multi-department collaboration effort with internal teams represented from various departments, or I should say every department, including city manager, city council, city attorney, city clerk, city treasurer, finance, human resources, fire department, information systems, library, planning and building safety, fire department, public works, and rec, and parks. So there are a lot of people that are actually participating in this particular project. You know, very proud of the team in terms of their ability to come together and give us the website that you'll see and hear more about later in this presentation. Guidance was also provided by the Information Systems Technology Committee, as well as a subcommittee. We had, you know, probably no more than thirty, forty, fifty meetings over the course of the year collaborating on this. The site was also developed in partnership with Granicus, who basically provides a cloud-based solution for government communications and website design. We are hearing some good feedback. We're hearing, actually, a lot of good feedback from other cities. Fairfield is one, Sutter County, I do know people at Long Beach, so I've received a number of calls from the city of Long Beach, so we are really looking forward to moving forward with this particular project. The website, I think that you'll find that we did meet or attempted to meet your objective in being forward-thinking and putting the residents first, and looking to provide ease of use with respect to information and providing those services, okay? With that, I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of council. Wanted to just go over sort of the process that we went through, but we're really here tonight to celebrate city staff because they all have full-time jobs, and this is above and beyond what they're doing every day in finance and planning and police and fire, and they all came together, interdepartmental team, and made this website happen. There's just no way it could have happened without all of these dedicated people who are here tonight, because we simply could not have -- we could not have gotten all this together. So our vision for the site, number one, our goal of enhanced customer service engagement and communications. So this is our central hub for communications, a critical component of our communications plan. We have nowhere to lead people if our site looks like it's from, you know, the early 90s. So this is now integrated into all of our communications, Facebook, social media, all social media, and any kind of gov delivery announcements we're sending out. We're leading people all to this site as a central place where you can get the correct information in a timely fashion. So that's one of our key goals of communications. We'll be measuring success and accomplishments as we go. Google Analytics is all dialed in on all seven sites, and in addition to the -- I think Charles mentioned the economic development and destination sites, which have been up for over a year now, also on the Granicus platform, so now they're all integrated under one umbrella, which is really nice. But you can do individual sites or the whole thing in terms of analytics. As I mentioned, a central hub. We followed your direction in terms of vision for the site, and one thing that Mayor Boils said that I kind of didn't know how to interpret, but he said he wanted it to have a sense of humor. And so I thought, do we add jokes? What should we do? But we translated that into personality. We didn't want it to be a dry, boring government site that people go to and they see a lot of gray and they become tired and sad. We wanted this one to be lively and vibrant, and so we added some personality. We put a lot of really great photographs in there. Photography was key. Thank you to El Segundo TV and Robert Settle for capturing those images. And we, you know, dealt a lot with color, and different departments have their own kind of brand image, but it all comes under one cohesive brand. And then coming soon will be the Internet, which we're kind of building up now and putting the pieces together for how we want that to work. So what did we do? We looked at our old site, started there, looked at a ton of other sites from cities all over the country, looked at what Granicus had done, what other developers had done, and we prioritized what we wanted to have on our site. What were the most important things? And this is under the leadership of Margaret and Kristen in getting that group together and asking each department, what does the site need to do? What is it not doing now that you would really love? It could be anything. You'd really love to see it do in the future. And so we prioritized that. We looked at the tools that Granicus had to offer, and we plugged those tools in as applicable. Services-oriented, people don't want to go to the website to find out what X -- I'm not going to say a particular department, what X department is doing. Who's running this department, or what's -- they want to know how to pay their bills, how to get their permits, what's the zoning. So it's very oriented towards the user experience and what the person who's using the site wants to do on the site, not thinking about -- we do have the departments and everything organized in that structure, but the priority structure is really about the services. Modern and forward-thinking, our site is definitely, you know, a clean, modern-looking site that I think could stand up to, and I mentioned this last time, you know, our business community and who's here and who's looking at it. We don't have to be embarrassed about our site. It looks very modern and clean. And then, like I mentioned, focus on user experience. So we -- is this Margaret? Okay. So we -- sorry, I didn't want to step on your -- Margaret's coming up next. So we organized the main navigation, and if you imagine all of the things that are currently -- we're currently on this old site, and what we wanted it to do, that becomes just a very tangled spider web. So we got that all organized and divided out and put into neat buckets where we thought it made sense, most sense. We have a service finder, which is how do I and pay a bill, get a permit, dog registration, anything. It kind of has a -- we've all looked at it, but it has a if this, then this, then this kind of structure to it, so it really whittles down the information and makes it easy to find things. Quick links. We have report it, which is an exciting feature whereby members of the public can report anything they see, snap a photo, send it in. It goes to the right staff, the right department, and it's handled, and they can follow up on the progress, and we can also track the progress within City Hall on how that issue is being resolved. The calendar is one of my favorite things. So we have -- a lot of departments have their own calendars. BD, fire, have a lot of stuff going on that's specific to their group, but we have a master calendar now. So you put things on your calendar, or you can also click to put it on the main calendar. So you look at the main calendar, you should be able to see everything that's going on in the City Hall. And then the news, we're really trying to celebrate what's going on in the city. We've been doing this in economic development in terms of businesses coming in and accomplishments in our community, but we want to add to that what's going on within City Hall, accomplishments of the city, accomplishments of city council. So our news function is very prominent on the homepage and enables us to do that. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to Margaret.
Hello, everybody. I am very happy to have launched this project a little over two weeks ago, and as you can see up on the screen, we launched the original website or the old website now on August 16th, 2005, a very long time ago, and there is a lot of work that we did, and here's our new site launching, or that launched January 28th, 2020. Vibrant colors, the purple meaning trust, sorry, blue meaning trust, purple meaning energy, and we used gold for a lot of our CTAs to bring a little bit of warmth into the website design. Big, bold, brilliant. As Barbara mentioned earlier, our navigation is organized. On the old site, you have the left-hand nav, you have stuff across the top. Here, it's one main navigation and then multiple entry points using either the quick links under the hero, the shortcuts on the business resident or visitor cards, and then quick and easy access to our calendar and news items. I'm just going to flip through now to -- this was the fire department homepage on the left side, and what they came up with in their vision is on the right, using kind of similar design structure with a hero, quick links, featuring events, and some news. It's a little hard to see in the screenshot, but we also incorporated some design treatments, all risk and courtesy and service as watermarks under the main calendar and in the footer of this site. Next up, we have library, long page, a lot of words, not quite sure to where to look or where to begin, but the new website makes it very easy and very friendly. Some interesting stats at the bottom, 2019, you know, library had 233,000 visits, so. Moving on, the police website. The old one, honestly, not quite sure what to say about that, but the new website is pretty fantastic. I think it shows their news and events that they want to call out to the community, but it also shows at the bottom their social media channels, how and how they're engaging with the community for fun things that are happening or some news that they want to share, you know, be on the lookout for a criminal suspect, that sort of thing. Last up, recreation and parks, using the colors in their logo across their site, a little bit fun design, very engaging design, and also at the bottom, they also feature a service finder specific to recreation and parks, so it's, again, a how do I apply for home-delivered meals? And you just filter through each step, and then you will be taken to the correct location. And just quickly mentioning that next up, we are going to be talking about how we're going to maintain and keeping the site content fresh and alive, and how we are managing that internally. So KB, there she is. Oh, actually.
Analytics.
That's right.
Which is very important.
One last thing. As Barbara mentioned, we did implement Google Analytics throughout the -- all the seven websites, and we will be tracking on a global level how much traffic is coming, what device, you know, is being used to access the information, what pages are the most popular, and we can also drill down to specific pages or specific departments. And we plan on taking this information and further refining our content and making some decisions on how we can enhance or add additional features and obviously remove what's not working. So with that, KB?
Don't go anywhere. We have some fun facts next. I wanted to touch on governance. Our site is in great shape right now. It's always evolving, but we want to make sure there is a plan in place moving forward, that we have the right folks on it, and city staff knows what their roles are. So we've created this ongoing plan to constantly update it, and it's managed through the Communications Committee, which is a great group of folks here that meet once a month. We get together and talk about everything from the website to gov delivery, which you are now familiar with, with the weekly city manager update and our city news and our internal news for staff. So that group gets together, and this document outlines who is responsible for what area, how often they need to check the content, update it, and just all the processes. So there's never a question on how do I do that, or how does that get updated, that there is outlined information that anybody can jump in there and do it. However, it's assigned by the different departments. So now we want to share some fun facts about the website and its development.
So we started, we formally kicked off this website project on January 30th at 12:00 PM with Granicus, and we launched it just about a year later. So if you take all that time, it equates to 8,700-plus hours, 522,000 minutes, and over 31 million seconds. We also, at this point in time, have over 70 online submittable forms. What I mean by that is that somebody can go to the website, they can select, apply, for example, an oversized vehicle permit, fill it out online, submit it online, and if there is a fee attached to that, they can pay for it online. We have -- we received our first actually dog license application a day after we launched with the payment. Absolutely works. We have about 877 pages currently on the site, over 1,300 calendar events, 2,400 images in our image library, not necessarily on the site, but a pull of where we can pull from, and we have over 560 documents in our document repository that is part of the site, and right now, we have currently 197 FAQs for people to take a look at. And now, I'd like to turn it back over to the -- And now, I'd like to turn it back over to the mayor for some recognition and commendations.
Thank you, great stuff. So I have a proclamation and for their outstanding services to the city of El Segundo as a team member for the new city website. This is in recognition of their dedication and contribution to the new website. And this is specifically for Christina Cora Beckman, who went above and beyond and demonstrated initiative, leadership, and diligence in strategy development and execution of a world-class website for the El Segundo Public Library. in this room, that were part of this huge undertaking, those 31 million seconds. We also have Amy McDaniel and Brenna Wengert. In recognition of your participation and membership of the El Segundo website team, Wengert, Wengert? Wengert, did I get that right? Wengert? thank you for your contributions and hard work in making this new website a success. Yes? Okay, are you here? Okay, you want to do one photo? So I'm going to start with a couple members of the Technology Committee, Jessica Davis, This is separate, two, we'll do two photos, okay? Yeah. Come on up, let's do a photo. Madeline Smith, Paul Lanyer, thank you very much. Are there any other tech committee members either present or passed? No, thank you. Jasmine Allen, James Amusa, Eric Anderson, Vanessa Arias, Robert Seidel, Lucien Cummings, Ryan Delgado, Anthony Esparza, Latonya Fair, Dana Hang, Darnell Jenkins, Michelle Jennings, Dan Kim, Jeff Lehman, Margaret Liu, Richard Magana, Dino Marsachi, Jason Martin, Leanna Osborne, Mance Polisios, Eduardo Shonburn, Mona Schilling, Angelo Satello, Carolyn Erner, and Barbara Voss. Did I miss anyone? Pretty comprehensive list. Okay, why don't we do a photo with all of you and I think we have something for you. Thank you very much.
I guess so.
Come on. You gotta be in there. We'll hold you sideways. Right, right, right. Further?
All right, you're getting in, right?
I guess so.
Come on. You gotta be in there. We'll hold you sideways. Right, right, right. Further?
Right, a quarter.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
All right, one, two, three. Let me do it with this camera. And, a little more, there's a lot of here. And one, two, three, and let me take one more. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you everyone.
Yeah, of course. Oh, sorry.
I think it's because if you're short, put your feet on it.
You like that laptop?
I told you I saw it somewhere, yeah, so it's under here. And it kicked something and I was like digging it out, like what is that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we move on from this item, I do want to acknowledge a couple folks here, or to augment this. One, the City Council, to thank you for your vision and leadership from a couple years back. This was one of the many things that this council said you want us to do better. So you provided that vision and drive to do that. But I also would like to recognize Greg Carpenter, the previous city manager, because this effort started on his watch and we would be remiss if we didn't point that out and mention him. And then the gentleman with the laboring oar to ensure it got done was Charles, our IT Director. So if we could have one last round of applause for Charles. Thank you.
Before we go on, Charles, I just have to commend you. I took a leap of faith and I scheduled an inspection for my construction site last night through the website. I didn't call today to make sure that it went through, nothing, I just trusted that it worked and the inspector showed up today. Everything worked out, yeah.
What was the appointment window? I'm just curious.
It was roof nailing.
Roof nailing, but like what was the time period? I'm just curious.
Oh, it didn't give a time period, but it was super simple. It was schedule an inspection, what's your permit number, it searches the permit number, pulls it up, and then there's a drop-down menu as to, well, what inspection are you requesting? You request it and click submit and then you get this confirmation. And I could have printed it, but I was like, I'm not printing it, I'm not doing anything. I'm just going to trust that it works.
That's awesome. Good to hear, thanks.
It makes the sale.
All right, next up, we have, I'm guessing, public comments. Let's see here, roll call first, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Nickel.
Here.
Councilmember Pimental.
Here.
Mayor Potemperstuck.
Here.
Mayor Boyle.
Here. All right, we have some speaker cards. If you do want to speak this evening, just a reminder, new protocol we put in place last meeting, please complete this. Tracy Weaver, city clerk, has these cards for you. And we've got a couple that are clearly for public communications and then several that are for the short-term rentals item on the consent agenda. So what I will do is, I'm going to actually ask that, I think this is okay with you, Mark, city attorney, that the people that are here to speak about item 10, they speak now because I'm not assured that it's going to be pulled as a consent item.
That's fine, as long as they get the opportunity to speak before the council takes action.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do. All right, thank you. All right, so first up, we have Chris Kegel.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name again is Chris Kegel. I'm with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board and as you know, we help the community find jobs and help businesses find workers. And today, I'm here to give you your quarterly report, your second quarterly report. And quickly, a few of the things that happened in the second quarter. We helped a couple El Segundo residents enter into our worker program for dislocated worker and adults. We placed two of them into employment. We helped two out-of-school youth get paid work experience at a couple El Segundo businesses. We enrolled another two in our Youth at Work Jobs Program for 120 hours of paid work experience at El Segundo businesses. Our staff reached out to over 51 employers in El Segundo. We still have our office at the Air Force Base, if you'll recall, helping military professionals exit into employment in the region. And also in your packet I'm going to leave for you, we also have our annual report, which I hope you'll take a look at as well. And anyone watching today or here that needs employment services at no cost, you can call us at 310-970-7700 or visit our website at sbwib.org. Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. Good as always seeing you. What was that number again? 97077?
00.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Mr. Axelrod. Jack, you can speak now or at the end of the meeting, but you're here now. Usually you speak at the end, but please, yeah, I'd love to hear from you.
Good evening to the City Council and all members, all citizens of the city who are here. I have nothing new to add to things I've said before, but many of you have never heard me muddle my way through those subjects anyway, so I'm going to go, I'm going to proceed as if you had never heard me. Hard to know where to begin. I'd like to change the city seal of El Segundo. That's not a very attractive seal and it doesn't really portray the city in any way that I recognize, but that's me. I don't find our industrial city looking like that seal. So I'm again suggesting that a new design for the city seal is welcome and I would suggest it be done by competition. I suggest a new name for the city. I'm embarrassed being a citizen in a city that's named after an oil refinery, not after some sort of public virtue or some true value aesthetically or politically. To be named after an oil refinery just seems absurd to me. Thank you for all your, all the work that you do, because I know that you do, I don't know, I'm assuming, you do a hell of a lot of work and it's terrific that you, that you give of your time and your lives to this. I don't think, I'm here for the business of El Segundo. That expression occurs in, for the last, I've lived here for 31 years, that expression occurs in every one of these addresses. These comments are supposed to be centered on the business of El Segundo. Well, the business of El Segundo, what is that? I don't understand. I've been here 31 years, I still don't know what it means, the business of El Segundo. I would say you seem most concerned with the commerce of El Segundo, not the business, the commerce of El Segundo. I will refer you to a statement I've made when I've, when I quoted from, when I quoted from Dickens' Christmas Carol. He's, the ghost of, Marley's ghost complains to Scrooge. Scrooge defends himself by say, by trying to ameliorate the ghost and he says, Jacob, you were always a good man of business. Marley, the ghost of Marley responds with anger, what I think would be anger, if I were directing a show, it would be certainly with anger. Man, he says, business, mankind was my business. And I think that should be your, your business as well, not the commerce of El Segundo, but the business of El Segundo. And it's never been defined, I've lived here for 31 years, I still don't know what that expression means. I haven't done a lot to find out what you all thought it meant, but I wish you would. How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Thank you. It seems to me that of the five members here, and by the way, I usually start by congratulating you all, you're terrific. You're spending your time and effort and abilities and talents on improving the city. I recognize that, that's wonderful. It's not enough. It seems to me that you have five city council members, one of them at least ought to be giving a report on the condition of the ocean. We depend upon the ocean in El Segundo. Not only we do, but the society and the whole of the country, we all depend upon the ocean. There's never been, I've never, in the 31 years I've been here, I've never heard a report on the condition of the ocean or of the beach. Never heard, I've never heard anybody comment on that, on the condition of the beach. And we live in a great, what I think is a pretty good city. I like living here, I'm going to be reluctant to leave it, but that's going to be, that's coming up. I probably have talked too much. No, I haven't. I just don't have enough time or the ability to speak coherently about these, about subjects that move me greatly. But the most important of all of these is, our business is the environment, our business is the human environment, not the commerce of the city. That's enough. Okay, listen, thank you very much for your attention, thank you for all the things that you do for the city of El Segundo. You are terrific. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Axelrod. All right, next up, we have Gary Schmunk and then followed by Kathy Wishard, yeah, in that order, please.
Good evening. My name is Gary Schmunk. I live at 415 Concord Street. First, I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work, the council, planning department, planning commission, police department has put into the efforts to solve our neighboring short-term rental issue. It's truly appreciated. I know I haven't said that before, but it is. I know it's been a lot of work, a thorn in many people's side, but we do appreciate that that's pretty much wrapped up now. I still have concerns about the short-term rental pilot program. I know at the prior meeting, at least three of you on the council expressed concerns about data that you hadn't received from the planning department that you felt was fairly important, the evaluation process of the program, as well as surveying the other surrounding South Bay cities to see what experiences they'd have, they've had with this type of I think that a bad regulation, if pushed through too quickly, is no better than no regulation at this point. Having experienced the situation that myself and my neighbors did, the devil is in the details. So I have great concern that rushing something through just to have something isn't truly the answer. Appreciate, again, your hard work on the process and as well this short-term rental regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schmunk. And then we have Ms. Wishard, please.
Well, I wasn't ready to be called so soon.
Do you want me to go to someone else? Be happy to do that, give you a few minutes?
Well, it's okay, now that I'm up here.
Okay.
I'm Kathy Wishard and I just have a couple of comments that I wanted to make. One is, I haven't heard anybody mention all of the shootings that have taken place in the short-term rentals. There were 42 shootings in the last six months of 2019 and 17 of those were fatalities. Airbnb is now saying that, you know, they're putting in a new policy into place and no party houses. Why did it take them seven, waiting, going through 17 fatalities to make that, you know, policy? And really, what can they do about it anyway? They're not at these houses, the owners take care of all the renting, so I think that's kind of a false statement. I don't think they really have intentions of doing anything, I don't think they can. You know, 17 people died, three more in the last month, they were in Toronto, but it's a worldwide problem and I don't know, why do we want to bring that here? You know, to say it would never happen here, I'm sure all of those cities said the same thing. I just, I don't understand, with all the trouble and all the police time that went into the Virginia Party House, you know, you know it's a problem. So I just, I don't understand why we're rushing to bring this here, because it can be a really big problem. I also thought that our three zones were excluded from being allowed to have short-term rentals and then a contractor I know it's been a lot of work, a thorn in many people's side, but we do appreciate that that's pretty much wrapped up now. I still have concerns about the short-term rental pilot program. I know at the prior meeting, at least three of you on the council expressed concerns about data that you hadn't received from the Planning Department, that you felt was fairly important, the evaluation process of the program, as well as surveying the other surrounding South Bay cities to see what experiences they'd have, they've had with this type of situation. I think that a bad regulation, if pushed through too quickly, is no better than no regulation at this point. Having experienced the situation that myself and my neighbors did, the devil is in the details. So I have great concern that rushing something through just to have something isn't truly the answer. Appreciate, again, your hard work on the process and as well this short-term rental regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schmunk. And then we have Ms. Wishard, please.
Well, I wasn't ready to be called so soon.
Do you want me to go to someone else? Be happy to do that, give you a few minutes?
Well, it's okay, now that I'm up here.
Okay.
I'm Kathy Wishard, and I just have a couple of comments that I wanted to make. One is, I haven't heard anybody mention all of the shootings that have taken place in the short-term rentals. There were 42 shootings in the last six months of 2019, and 17 of those were fatalities. Airbnb is now saying that, you know, they're putting in a new policy into place, and no party houses. Why did it take them seven, waiting, going through 17 fatalities to make that, you know, policy? And really, what can they do about it anyway? They're not at these houses, the owners take care of all the renting, so I think that's kind of a false statement. I don't think they really have intentions of doing anything, I don't think they can. You know, 17 people died, three more in the last month, they were in Toronto, but it's a worldwide problem, and I don't know, why do we want to bring that here? You know, to say it would never happen here, I'm sure all of those cities said the same thing. I just, I don't understand, with all the trouble and all the police time that went into the Virginia Party House, you know, you know it's a problem. So I just, I don't understand why we're rushing to bring this here, because it can be a really big problem. I also thought that our three zones were excluded from being allowed to have short-term rentals, and then a contractor got up at the beginning of one of the meetings recently and said that he was in the business of tearing down the old houses and building duplexes so that investors could have short-term rentals. And then magically, now these are going to be allowed in our three zones, and I didn't hear any discussion of it. So I was kind of curious about that. And then when the whole thing went on with the loopholes in the law regarding all of these people having to move out of their apartments because of the rent control, they came here in tears, some of them, and begged for your help. And I think it's ironic that you said there's nothing that you could do, but at the same time, you're pushing for this short-term rental thing to go through, which is minimum, you know, making less rentals available. These people were unable to find rentals in town, and they were having to leave, and you're approving rentals, you're approving for, let's say, you know, a person to lease out apartments, and then use them as short-term rentals. So how fair is that to these people who just want to live and work here, and just want an apartment, when, you know, one guy is leasing out five and using them as short-term rentals? You know, that's not fair. And he's just, maybe some guy from New York who comes into town, leases out all these apartments, it's not fair to the landlord either, I mean, I don't know if the landlords are even aware, and they're the ones that are getting stuck with all the upkeep on the apartment, and this guy's making, what, $100 a day off of their apartment that they might be getting $10 a day for. I don't think the landlords are aware that that's what's happening. And then you have people desperate to find rentals here who can't find them, and that's why. And then what about the families who are living in these apartment buildings, and they've got short-term rentals on all sides? You know, how fair is that? I just don't understand why you would want to do the Star City. I just don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wishard. And then we have Leila Shu, who's, I think, the last that I have for speaker cards.
Well, good evening again. Here we are, and how many years have we been here talking about the same thing? Back and forth. Like Kathy said, somebody comes here and says, hey, I want a piece of that cake too. So next time, the Planning Commission gets together and said, okay, those guys want a piece of cake of their short-term rentals, so let's approve that, or let's suggest for the City Council that that should go through. So everybody needs to have a part of that. I had to, I loved this gentleman's speech, when he was talking about, and he talked about human, human environment. What are we doing here? We are ruining this town. I'm not going to talk about that one house on Virginia, 416 Virginia, everybody knows. I'm just talking about the whole town. It's not, absolutely not okay to let this change. It's, your job is to protect us, right? And you're working for us, that's what I thought, you're the government here. But I feel like you're only listening to ones who want to make big money, and I totally get that point, that sometimes you have to sacrifice and you have to find another job or do something else. And a lot of these people have come from other cities and towns, and they have ton of listings, and, or you can regulate it, you're going to make it, I've read all the papers, 130 pages or whatever there is, that, oh, we're going to make it the best regulations ever. How does it work in other places? Have you checked what happens in Europe? People are losing their homes there. Portugal is a mess. And do you want it here? Mayor Drew Boils, you said that the 500, Fortune 500 companies here, that they want us to have, you know, places for people to stay. They want their employees have the place to stay permanently, or at least as long as they work here. They don't want to come here for a weekend. We have a lot of hotels here, and I have been so surprised that the hotels owners or company, whatever, these corporations don't say anything. They're afraid of Airbnb. It's a huge, multi-billion dollar company, and it's going to eat up El Segundo. You approve this, and then you try to get out of it, good luck. They're going to sue El Segundo because they want the piece of cake here. And I don't understand why all the other South Bay cities have banned Airbnb. Why? Because they're not cool? They don't think that Fortune 500 companies needs to have a place to stay or something? No, because they want to see what this gentleman said, have a human, human environment for the people who live there. That's it. I don't, I don't see the urgency for this. I sent a letter yesterday on email, I requested that anybody who is on City Council, City Council members and Planning Commission members should, hopefully in writing, let us know if you have any involvement in short-term rentals or any, any close relatives, because then you should not be able to vote. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shu. Are there any other public communication requests? Okay, that will close out public comments. City manager follow-up comments, I'll go to you first, and then council if they so choose.
No comments with respect to the speakers, thank you.
Okay, council?
It would seem that there's some misconceptions about what's in the body of the ordinance, I suspect we'll address that if it gets pulled, and I think it would probably be to the public's benefit to recover some of the specific items in the pilot program that are of concern.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, that would be no problem. Our Planning and Building Services Director Sam Lee and other staff, as necessary, are prepared to answer whatever questions you may have.
Thank you. All right, item A, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. All right, consent calendar.
Can I pull item 10, please?
Okay, item 10, thanks. Any other pulls?
I'll pick number 6, 8, and 11.
6, 8, and 11. Is that it?
Wait, wait, hold on, I think I said the wrong, sorry.
8 is the software, the three-year Microsoft license, 11 is the marketing.
Yeah, I don't need to pull 6.
6, okay. So that was the only change, right, Carol?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve item?
Don't need to pull 6?
I'm going to get to that, because I'm going to make a motion to approve all the others. Do I have a motion? We're pulling so far, 8, 10, and 11.
Yes, 6, 8, and 11.
6, 8, 10, and 11.
Sorry.
Do I have a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 9, and 12?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. Okay, item 6.
All right, authorize City Manager to execute a professional service agreement with Cosmo Associates, Inc., to provide general state advisory and project funding consulting services for development citywide. So I just pulled this because after reading the document, it really was specifically talking about the Main Street, the downtown area, and I just wanted to make sure we were all in agreement on that, because I'm not sure if we had agreed to put funding toward that yet.
The way I read it is that it is the, it's the downtown corridor, not specifically Civic Plaza and the city property, is that correct, City Manager?
That's correct.
So along those lines, then, I'm okay, having someone study our downtown area to see if there's opportunities for us, but I think what you're getting at is, I don't think we're saying, hey, $44,000 just to study this property.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, for clarification, it's more than just the downtown area, there are other projects that come up from time to time when we could take advantage, like to take advantage of the consultant services to help us out as need be. So it is somewhat broad.
Okay, since you brought that up, I didn't see a time bound on the agreement, maybe I missed it, but I thought it was for a specific scope of work and deliverables, is that not the case?
That, that's correct. It's fairly open to get us started, and it is pointed out that it's possible, if we need additional services, we would come back later, more than likely through the next budget cycle, and we would put that in front of you through that, that budget cycle.
And this one is funded through vacancy savings for this year? I can't remember. One of them was, for sure.
Yeah, it's coming out of the general fund, in particular Planning and Building Services Department. So it's coming out of the existing budget. And we don't, technically, we don't have to come before you, since it's under $50,000, but to be transparent and full disclosure, this could end up being a contract greater than this dollar amount, depending on the demand for, for the services going forward.
I'm the one for downtown, Scott, do you have a sense of when that will, when we'll actually get some deliverables in terms of recommendations, what the options are to analyze for downtown?
Definitely by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a better sense as the direction, the direction we're going. The council has in your strategic plan, one of your directions is to take a look at downtown in general and repurposing potentially the Civic Center property, but we've had requests come to us, separate from your direction, with interest to do things in the downtown and surrounding areas, so we need more focus, more vision, in order to move forward, to do that. So we, we do not have a specific project yet, it's possible we may in the future.
I'm just thinking, if we're going to be considering things in July, starting in July as part of our strategic plan, it would be nice if any recommendations and, you know, options available to us dovetailed with that timing.
Well, absolutely, we'll be more specific when we do the update to the strategic plan and the budget for the next year. So this is, this is at the preliminary stages.
So I just want to make sure, you know, we do have a lot of capital improvement projects already on the slate, and a lot we push back because we didn't have the, the staff to do them. I would hate to start a new project when we still have a lot of other projects, I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping focused on what we need to, we've identified initially to complete.
Right.
Before we start another big project, if we don't have the staffing to do that.
And if I could add, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, for clarification, this is, it's actually responding to the private sector's request from a land use standpoint. We have potential applicants coming to us saying, we like to do these land use projects. So it could involve, evolve into a potential capital improvement project, but this is more processing a potential application, or two, or three, potentially amending our downtown specific plan. Sam and his team have talked about that, so we're seeking to get an outside consultant to help us look at the broader picture. Should we amend our specific plan for the downtown? How will we go about processing these applications that are before us? So in part, we're implementing your vision, as part of the strategic plan, but we're also reacting to private property owners and developers' interests to do projects. So I'll, I'll say with the caveat that this will not impact our ability to deliver capital improvement projects, that's being managed on a separate track. But I hear the concern, it's very well noted, and that's why having an outside consultant in general helps us.
Right.
Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Well, I just want to make sure, because, you know, if we're spending city dollars to help a private company, I just want to make sure that there's benefit to both.
Understood.
Not just to this third-party company.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood.
Can you hear further discussion, or are we ready for a vote?
I think for, for a number of years now, we've been talking about trying to find ways to make Main Street more attractive, competitive. We talked through plants, lighting, parklets, if our parking regulations fit for purpose. I think having someone that is not going to take any of our city staff's time and develop something from the outside who does this, I think it's likely to be money well spent.
Thanks, Chris. You want to make a motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Thank you.
All right, number eight, to award a contract to Insight through the City of Riverside Corporation purchasing agreement through an exemption to the city's formal bidding requirement pursuant to El Segundo Municipal Code, and authorize the City Manager to execute a three-year software license agreement with Insight to provide Microsoft License and Office 365. Now, I pulled this really because I know this has been discussed, going to Office 360 has been a topic we've talked about since we formed the Tech Committee, and it is more expensive to the city, but the benefits outweigh the costs, and I just wanted you, Charles, to have a, to give us a little bit of, to let the community know the benefits of moving to 360, especially given that we've had a couple instances where we've been taken down.
Sure, sure. Yeah. To provide an explanation, moving to Office 365, more specifically, we're talking about moving our email services, excuse me, moving our email services to the cloud, so that'll offer a number of different things. In the event that we have an incident here in the city, email will be available to everyone that works in the city from any location in the world, so it'll be available to them. Additionally, we have some bottlenecks internally with respect to some of the bandwidth and sending very large attachments. I'm sure many of you have experienced that, that we either have to shrink the attachment or we have to break them up. This will also give us the ability to send much larger attachments. From an email standpoint, everything will be archived in the actual cloud, so from, from a record standpoint, it's accessible to us all, and, you know, more than that, we're going to take a lot of the load off of our internal city systems and move that heavy lifting up into the cloud, which will basically give, you know, my team and others a little bit more bandwidth to work on other projects, right? So we won't have the care and the feeding of what we call the exchange system, which is, you know, which is, requires a lot of care and feeding, right? So through even some of our recovery, disaster recovery processes, exchange is probably the fattest, if you will, application that we have. What I mean by that, it's bloated, it's a lot of data, we're talking about terabytes and terabytes of data, so it takes me days and days to recover. So all of that will go away, and I believe that we'll be in a much better position to support the city, as well as support our residents and community.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, sir.
So I'd like to move approval of item number eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0, okay. Item 10, I think that was you, Mr. Nichol.
That was me. Thank you, Mr. Boils. Item 10 is a Zone Text Amendment, creating a pilot program to allow the, allow and regulate short-term rentals in the city residential zone districts throughout a short-term rental permit process. I pulled this item because last council meeting, we had a very long discussion on this. Thinking back to the last council meeting, it was also a long meeting, and what do they say about, like, diminishing return on us and our energy levels? So late in the meeting, I don't believe anything great gets done, and so I wanted to make a couple points again and see if they land on warmer waters this time. One being, I truly believe that we should limit the number of nights that a short-term rental can be rented. If you limit the number of nights, even if you live near a short-term rental, at least you know that it can't be rented out 365 days out of the year, and the person is not living there and it's straight for profit. You cap the profit, and what you do is you, you make the person looking to just capitalize on that choice, you make them have to make a business decision based upon the number of nights they're allowed to rent it. And I think that could potentially limit the number of short-term rentals we have. And the other one that I want to make is, I truly believe we need to prohibit the whole house, or the whole home, short-term rental. I believe Councilmember Pimentel spoke at length about, you know, the 52nd third birthday party of the year that you're dealing with on a Saturday, and, you know, with the new stadium coming online and everything else, I, you know, I think what Jack said was, was spot on. It just echoed my thought, and my thought was simply that we, we set policy in the hope that everyone will be neighborly, everyone will, everyone will be good actors and respect their neighbors and respect this neighborhood, but within every policy comes the person who is simply looking to make money off of the policy and isn't really concerned about being a good actor. And that's why we must put those regulations in place, assuming there are going to be bad actors. Assuming there's gonna be bad actors that tiptoe on that line of, well, I am not breaking any of the rules set by this regulation. I have no citations and yet the neighbor is still inconvenienced, not just a little bit, but a lot, by that short-term rental. I think the home shares, they're doing it right. They're on-site most of the time. They're there to self-regulate because they're not gonna live in a house where things are going crazy. And they're a face that the neighbors can see and they can talk and, and be there. Whereas a whole home being rented out short-term all the time, it's like living next to, you know, a hotel or a vacation rental. And it's, it is not the fabric by which I truly believe our community is made from. So those are my two points. That's why I wanted to bring it back up. And I'll leave it on you guys.
I did want to follow up. Greg, were, was, were we able to find out what the other cities were doing around the area?
Hermosa Beach banned in residential zones, including advertising. Redonda Beach banned, not allowed. Manhattan Beach banned, not allowed. Rancho Palos Verdes banned, not allowed. Rolling Hills banned. Rolling Hills Estates banned. P V Estates banned. Torrance allowed by C U P or by planning administrative action. Hawthorne is drafting an ordinance. L.A. allows home share. Santa Monica allows home share. Culver City is drafting an ordinance and Inglewood's drafting an ordinance. So I think that what jumped at me the most out of this was the two cities that allow home shares. They're seeing exactly what we're seeing, which is the home shares that come and speak to us, I feel like they're doing it the right way. And they're not the ones that we are per se, you know, setting this, you know, pilot program to regulate. We're trying to regulate and protect the neighbors from those who are looking to come in and just capitalize on the ordinance. Sorry, I know that question was for you, Greg, but.
He beat you to it.
Okay. Any further comments?
Hermosa allows it in their mixed-use area, right? So it's, it's, and the geography of that lends it to a slightly different. I mean, you're going to experience it in a way that, this makes it seem like it's completely banned. It's really not. I mean, it's, it's a fact of life down there. Regulated in a similar platform that we are talking about regulating in.
But is that?
Is it enforceable if, if we are going to, I mean, it's a lot of places that say you can't rent the whole house, right, and there has to be a homeowner present, a home, home share. One of the enforceability issues that, in the research of this, he come to is that, well, where's the guy who lives here? He's out. You know, and it becomes a very difficult thing for a code enforcement officer or a, a police officer to enforce because we attempt to address that requirement here in having someone available within two hours to address an issue. So is that a bit of the same thing?
It is and it isn't, because I was thinking about that, too. If I have a four-bedroom house and I'm gonna rent out the, and I have it marketed as, you know, because we set a stipulation here, two humans per room, I believe in the ordinance. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, we changed that. Twelve, maximum occupancy to twelve.
Maximum occupancy of twelve. So if you have a, you know, five-bedroom house and you're a home share and you're saying the maximum occupancy is twelve and police show up because there is something going on or a neighbor is calling that this is a repeat.
Can we clarify that? It's, it's, you rent it out at two per room, but there can only be twelve people in the building at any given time, isn't that right? Two, two people per bedroom, but that's the, that's the, the party rule. You can't have twelve people.
No, you recall, we got a discussion of how do you define a person? At what point are children included in that definition as well?
Right. We deferred that until the administrative guidelines are written because we, we have to research that. That's gonna take some time. But twelve, twelve people maximum was the direction that we received. And we could easily add two per bedroom. But we, we have other limitations related to the size of the, of the house. So twelve is not a guarantee. Twelve's just the, the upper limit.
So to that.
I thought it was just two per bedroom.
But then, but we did carry on that conversation because someone brought up the question of the child.
Yeah.
But to that point, my thought was if it is limited, whatever the administrative booklet or guidelines state, one of those bedrooms has to be off-limits because it's a home share. One of those bedrooms has to be dedicated to that person that lives there, right? By default, then you are, I mean, yes, is there somewhat of a way around this? Yeah. Guy could be staying at his neighbor's house next door. He gets a call from the police, he walks over. You know, he gets a text from the person renting the house, he walks over. I mean, there are ways around it, but again, we're trying to set policy that is going to protect our neighborhoods while also allowing those who want a home share that need this income to continue to live here. It's part of their lifestyle, allowing them to do that and them being the good actors. That's what I implore on you to consider.
Would your maximum day count of rentals pertain to duplexes or home shares or things like that? The maximum number of days a place can be rented? If someone is a home share or if someone is in the R-three duplex that we talked about where you live in one building, in the adjacent building, you're cycling through renters, would your day count apply to those?
I, I, I still stand by it, yes. When we spoke about this, the planning commission years ago, we did the math. And the math was that you can, it's still, if, even if you cap the number of days, it still makes money sense to short-term rent. You will make more money if you short-term rent it and have, and get it rented every single one of those allowable days, but it only makes you a little bit more money. So then the question is, do I want this to be a long-term rental? Or do I want to make a little bit more money while constantly doing the turnover and managing it?
Well, then you're creating a disincentive entirely. Because the, if, if it truly is equal, why would someone go through that?
It wasn't equal. It was, it was still, it still made them more money.
I mean, I look at this, when I walked and knocked on doors four years ago, I heard from many more people that were concerned about losing their livelihood than I did from people that were concerned. And again, I live right around the corner from Whiting. I realize that house has been an issue. And I think the two things you're proposing both kind of get after the same thing, which may have been where Mr. Pimentel was leading. I don't know why you would need to do both. And then I would question, if you limit a whole home to Mr. Pimentel's question, what do you do about R-twos and R-threes that are separate homes in the same lot? I'm not sure. I'm just questioning, begs a question.
No, it's a good point. I mean, the thought is, and I believe the incumbent fear here from many of our residents is the R-one zone just became de facto R-two, R-three with junior ADUs and ADUs. And even though the state says you cannot short-term rent ADUs and junior ADUs, by default, you could have bought a house, you live on a, on a street with single-family homes. You know, I mean, you live in R-two zone, so it's different. There's rentals over the garages, so it's normal. But you live on a block where it's all single-family homes, this is R-one, and all of a sudden you have a triplex next to you. Now you have, instead of, you know, a family of five or seven living next to you, you have, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen people living next to you potentially. And now on top of that, you're, you're now potentially renting out that, say, whole home, the front of it, short-term. So you have people coming and going all the time. It's, you've turned what, and, you know, I, I I struggle with this concept of a house was originally, homes were created and home investment was originally created to provide shelter. You know, it's somewhere for us to sleep at night. It was not designed to simply become a commercial enterprise. And what the state has done has turned, I mean, they say it's a housing shortage and, you know, create these ADUs because it's gonna solve our, our housing issue and it's gonna create more, you know, affordable rental properties. But what it's done is, by default, has, has made people look at their homes. Instead of as shelters, they're viewing their homes as a profit center, as a commercial enterprise. And I can tell you right now, if I don't live next to one, and I really hope I never do, but if I did, I think my voice up here would sound completely different than it does. I've been trying to walk straight down the middle of this issue the whole time and make everyone happy and find a middle ground. And I think if my life was inconvenienced by one of these, like many of the people here are, I would take a much different approach. And when it comes down to it, if you think about what, how this town was founded, what we are all about, the fabric of this town, and yes, we want to be business-friendly, but at what cost? And I think that if we set these simple regulations, we're still doing a pilot program. I'm still in favor of doing a pilot program. I just think that we need to put in more protections for the people who are gonna have to live this three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year.
I would say this, Greg, this is a question, but people with somebody that qualifies, that the state views an ADU, they're ineligible to apply for the permit, right? If it, if it is a, a possible ADU, they cannot apply to be part of this program, correct?
Well, for the ADU.
Because the state law says you cannot use an ADU for short-term rental.
But they could use the house. But they can live in the ADU.
They can move into the ADU and then rent their house.
Right. But the house is still available, yes.
Well, wait. This, a couple things. Let me back up. First of all, and I, I don't know that this is, just to clarify, it is twelve people maximum, doesn't say adults, it's twelve people maximum that can be on the property at any time. It is, there is a restriction that cannot exceed two adults per room as far as who is staying at the premises. There was a question about children, that will get addressed. But there is a restriction also about, in total, two per. There's also a restriction that for the unit to be rented, that the person has to occupy, the owner has to occupy that resident, that has to be their permanent resident. So I interpret this, and maybe there's lack of clarity, but if the ADU can't be rented out and the, the primary structure can only be rented out if that is occupied by the property owner as their permanent residence.
That's all right. That's all correct. So at most, one day less than half of the year could be rented as it is, the way we wrote it.
Say that last line again.
If it were the entire house that was being rented, then one day less than half of the year is already the maximum. Because it has to be their primary residence defined as residing there more than half the year. So it's, that's already written into this. It's been there for a long time.
So it's the one hundred and eighty-two day cap to begin to start with, effectively?
Just on the whole thing.
For whole-house rentals.
For whole-house rentals.
Yeah. That would not apply to a home share. Because they're still there.
Yeah, because they're still there.
Yeah.
I do have a concern that all the other South Bay cities abandoned. And then L.A. has put only home sharing. So if we're allowing whole, whole homes, everyone's just gonna flock here because we're gonna be the only city that's gonna be allowing them. So it's almost like we're, we've become a beacon. So I think we have to really look at that because all the developers will be coming here and saying, oh, El Segundo's allowing it, so let's just all go there.
When you say developers, what do you mean? You mean like outside investors?
Yeah, investors.
I think the way, I don't think that's possible.
That's not possible due to the requirement that it has to be their primary residence. So outsiders from other cities who don't live here cannot take advantage of this program except for illegally and we'll catch them. Part of the reason why we have written into this the, the use of, of a consultant that will research these and find them for us is so that we can find the outside investors and put a stop to them, which will be funded by the program itself.
Right. So Scott, when you were saying a cap of the number of days, how many days were you thinking of capping it?
I don't know. I wanted to discuss that with you guys. I mean, that's one eighty-two. It sounds great. And you think, okay, yeah, great, half the year. It's wonderful. But I just, I guess, my biggest fear is that you have, you know, Kansas City Chiefs are coming to play the Rams. And, you know, Sunday game, everyone flies in on Thursday night, right? And that's a party Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. They go to the game on Sunday. And they've rented that house for a weekend. That's only four days, right? Fifty-two weekends out of the year, right? So fine, they can't rent it out four days for those fifty-two weekends. But if I live next door to a house like that, that's being rented out, that means the entire fall, I'm dealing with, with just, you know, I'm dealing with not my neighbors next to me all fall long. You know, and, and when you rent out a room, you, you're limiting the, the, the potential negative effect. Rent out two rooms, again, the potential negative effect that can have on the community is limited. When you rent out the entire house, sure, we have the, you know, the party house ordinance, we have these other things, but that's not gonna stop, I mean, again, we talked about people having to self-police and neighbors having to call on neighbors and, and having to just live with the inconvenience. And, and we know, based upon the party house in Virginia, the long arm of the, you know, city law, it takes a long time, you know, to, to get anything to happen.
I, I think, though, that this, as I recall, the punitive process written into this is far quicker than the party house ordinance because the, the, the specific prohibitions within this pilot program run in parallel. I mean, they can have it at the same time, but they're, they're also different. So you get the, the, on the one hand, the civil, the civil penalties for a loud and unruly party are different than the civil penalties and fines associated with violating this. Greg, is that right? So if you can just remind us quickly, I live next to this house. Although there's twelve people allowed to be breathing in it, they're not allowed to be having a party there. I've got the Camaro heads in town for the Chiefs game. I called the code enforcement guy on Thursday afternoon. He comes over and what happens?
You said in the afternoon?
In the afternoon, they're loud, they're causing a disturbance. It's not, you know, they're not violating the decibel measure, but it's clearly, you know, our ordinance says that, that, that these things are rented for a place to sleep.
That's right.
They are using it in a way that does not seem to be congruous with that. Code enforcement cites it as a violation of that, and then what happens?
Well, that's their first strike. And they get one more and then, then the permit is revoked after that. Now, if they, if they continue to do that, police will be involved at that point.
So the permit's revoked because the Raiders come to town the next weekend. So we've got Chiefs then Raiders, permits revoked, second party, and then the next fine is twenty-five hundred dollars.
It could be the very next day.
The next day, twenty-five hundred dollar fine.
That's right.
And then the next fine after that is?
Um, sorry, I don't.
Five thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, five thousand. It's a, it's a high fine.
So before the two-minute warning, we could be at seventy-five hundred dollars. That's pretty quick.
If I may, part of the reason why it took so long with the party ordinance was because we didn't have anything in the law at the time. We had to write that from scratch. Here, we're starting with it already written into the ordinance. So it, it becomes effective immediately upon the effectiveness of the ordinance, so we can enforce it right away. We don't have to write that again. It did take a long time. We, we agree.
No, I understand. I guess the, the point I'm just trying to make is if you publish rooms for rent, it's different than house for rent. And who you're attracting is completely different. That's, it's just, if I can cut down my rambling to one.
I would say generally speaking, however, I mean, I travel with my family all the time. I'm not gonna rent a room in a house with my kids. And I have never had a problem at Airbnb's anywhere in the world, and I've probably rented forty times. I don't know. Lot more hotel stays, but Airbnb quite a bit. And so I think that we're concerned about writing a, potentially writing these laws for the exceptions, not the norm. The forty-seven shootings, how many properties does Airbnb own? And what is that ratio of shootings compared to for general society? Probably pretty low. So we gotta be careful about the stats that we choose to look at. I think the staff has done an incredible job doing all the due diligence on this. It's been going on for several years. I am in favor of the way it's written with the caveat that the pilot program is in place until June of 2021. And Mark, are you confident that if we, to the point that was made during comments about us setting the precedent and then having challenges potentially with Airbnb, certainly anyone can sue for any reason, but you feel reasonably assured that if we really dial this thing back to not include whole homes in the future or kill the program altogether, that in a court of law, we would be okay and would stand up?
Uh, yes, with a couple of provisos. One, assuming the state legislature doesn't step in and change rules, which they seem to do more frequently than they used to. And Airbnb has been litigious with other cities. They have been unsuccessful a number of times. They've been successful sometimes. But the key is on this, as we discussed at the last meeting, is if the city decides to shut this down, and we've made it really clear, we've documented this well, council members have asked to see exactly what people are gonna be asked to sign and, and so that's very clear as to what their rights are and what they aren't, then yes, I think we should hold up well in court if the city decides to shut this down.
Thanks. I'll defer to my colleagues. Thanks. I'll defer to my colleagues in terms of how you want to proceed.
So I'm actually going to go with Scott, and I prefer not to have whole, whole, just do the, not to do the whole house and just do room shares. I'm interested, I actually like the idea of capping a number, we just have to determine what that is.
That could be determined in the, in this operating, or what's the manual called?
I would recommend, I would, no, I would recommend that be in the ordinance if you're going to do that. Because the guidelines will be for implementing the ordinance, and if we're going to have strict restrictions, and I'm not, that's not the right word. If we're going to have clear restrictions on particular uses or, and times that those should be in the ordinance, the administrative will be more for implementing these things. And so from a legal perspective, I would recommend that we would revise the ordinance to reflect the type of changes that you're talking about, if, if the council wants to head in that direction.
On a bit of a sidebar, I think it's worth clarifying because there's a question brought up in public comments. Greg, can you speak to the ability to people to rent out apartments as short-term rentals?
Right, in the R3 zone, short-term rentals would only be available to single-family homes and to duplexes. And just like everywhere else, it has to be the primary residence. So nobody from out of town can come in and buy up a lot of apartments as an investment to use as short-term rentals. That's written into the ordinance.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I know that was one of the things that was brought up, and I think that was clearly something that a lot of cities were concerned about going in. That is an incredibly valid concern, so I just wanted to make that clear, that that is not something that we would be subject to in this pilot program.
Correct, we heard that, that at the planning commission, so we did address that.
Thank you.
So someone, you want to propose some language then, Carol or Scott?
I think the 182 days across the board. It works, it's something, it's there. See how it goes. I mean, again, this is a pilot program. I mean, part of this is that staff is going to report back to us on how many people signed up for the permits, how many citations there are, what kind of TOT is coming back. They're going to give us, you know, those are, I mean, the success criteria, right? It's going to come back and we're going to be able to see, is this working, is it not working? Are they bad apples or are they not bad apples? I think the 182 days is fine, I just, instead of, I think to be clear and state 182 days versus has to be your primary residence?
So you're, in addition, is the cap of renting it out 100, a room 182 days? So in addition to you being on premises for 182 days, you can only rent out a room for 182 days?
Well, you don't technically have to be on premises, all it's stating is that for it to, for it to qualify as your primary residence, you cannot rent it out for more than half the year, is what we were told.
State and federal laws on this, and these really come into taxation issues, is you have to be able to demonstrate that it was your primary residence for six months and a day of the year. And the taxing authorities have different ways of verifying that when they're auditing people. But that's, the idea is has to be your primary residence, and that's where those definitions come from.
But I think on top of that, you're saying that a room cannot be rented out more than 182 days. Because, correct, like you're saying, separate those two, establishment of homeownership or home, someone living there is different than the number of days that you're capping renting it out.
Is that room nights? Is that room nights or rooms and nights?
Yeah, if you have two rooms in your house, yeah, are you, are you
It's nights, I mean, you're
182 nights, period.
182 nights.
So you have three rooms that you're renting out, you're, you have 60 per room?
No, no, no. I would say that you have 182 nights that you can rent out rooms in your house.
182 room nights per room?
Yeah.
No, total.
I was thinking in total, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about all the people that I spoke to.
I hear what you're saying, because if you have two bedrooms that you're renting out, if only one is rented tonight and that burns a night of your 182, whereas if you have both rented out, that only burns one.
Well, your whole purpose is to not have the constant flow of people, so.
Yeah, we, I mean, I heard from plenty of people that have a constant flow in their home and have no issues neighbors. You know some of the people, you've spoken to them as well. I understand the concern about the whole home, I don't understand the limit of nights.
No, yeah. I like the limited nights on the whole home, if the person is physically there, I'm less concerned about the number of nights, I guess. It's more, it's, it's the whole home. That's, that's where my, my biggest fear lies.
And then, just again, begging the question that I asked earlier, what do you do about R2s and R3s? Because I have 3s, and to clarify a question that was stated earlier, R3s were only eligible, Greg, what's the language again on that, R3s?
If it's a duplex or a single family.
Only when they're developed as a single family or duplex.
Okay, so we're really talking about duplexes. So what are we doing that, what are we doing in that situation with duplexes? You have potentially an owner on the property living there.
That goes back to the same as an ADU, at least as I would interpret it, that the owner's in one of the units, and in that unit the owner occupies, that the owner can rent out that unit that the owner occupies, the other one would not be eligible.
The state law may prohibit them from participating in this program because they can't use that, that would, that second home would either be an ADU or it can't be a short-term rental, is that right?
I, I said it's, well, I'll be
It's got a kitchen, it's got a door, it's got all the, no, R2 is not a factor.
No, the state law, I've said it would be like an ADU in that we can't, we don't, we're, state law does not allow an ADU to be rented out. And, and so those can't be occupied, that's a bad analogy, sorry. There's two units, our code makes it clear that the unit the person can rent is the one that they occupy. So if there's, if there's a duplex, only the unit that the owner occupies is eligible of the two units to be used as a short-term rental. That's the way our code is written.
I, I don't believe that's the way the ordinance was written though. Based on direction that we thought we received, duplexes were the exception, where the owner could live in one and rent the other.
That, that was our understanding, right? The owner could live in one and rent the other. But let me ask you a question then, how does the other one not become?
An ADU?
Well, then it's a whole home.
It's an R2, by right. And if you live next to an R2, you're already experiencing, you know, a higher density.
It's an easy fix if you want to make it pursuant to what the city attorney has said.
Well, I'm, as I read it, okay, so it's a little confusing. But if the intent is that, if the council's intent is that as long as the owner's renting one or is living in one of them, the other one can be used as a short-term rental, then we can, we can make that very clear.
Well, demonstrably, the home shares in that scenario, as they exist in town, have not been the problem. Right? The problem has existed in the whole home rental issue. So I think that's what so much of this is written around, trying to constrain.
Real quick, do we have duplexes in R1 areas?
I'm sure there are some that are non-conforming.
Because I think this is where the clarification needs to happen, because with the new state law, all ADUs cannot have short-term rentals.
Right.
So if you're in an R1 zone and you have a duplex, that duplex cannot be short-term rented, only the
That, that, it's, it's a fine distinction in planning, but that would be a non-conforming duplex, and that would not be an ADU.
Yeah, because there's some, there were some zones in town where it was R2, and then it got changed to R1, but that second unit was, was developed prior there, so it's like legal non-conforming use, right? So it's a duplex use in a, in an R1 zone. My opinion on an R2 lot or a duplex is that that is essentially home sharing. Even though it's two separate units, the owner is physically there. The neighbors see the owner. You know, it is, they are there, they are on site. And I feel that they can self-police. So I don't, I don't want to negatively attach restrictions on that, because that's not who I'm trying to protect.
You couldn't rent out one and then home share the other? I mean, not home share, Airbnb the other. So like if you have a duplex, you rent out one, you can't?
No, the ordinance is very clear that only one per property.
Yeah, so if they have, so if they have a short-term rental on their second unit, I, you know, I live on Wady next door to Drew, and I have a house in the front and a, you know, two-bedroom above my garage or one-bedroom above my garage, I can have a permit to short-term rent the unit above my garage. And that's considered, in my opinion, that is a home share, because you're still sharing your space with them.
But you couldn't rent out the front house?
You could, I mean, no, because a, a short-term rental can only be owner-occupied.
That's right.
Right? So, yeah, so for instance, if I own that house, I can't put a long-term renter in the front house
Correct.
and short-term rent the back.
It, it depends on whether it's an ADU or not, really, that's what it depends on.
No, but you were saying like you can't have a permit, you can have a short-term rental permit if you are not
If you're renting the front house.
If it's not, like if you're not an owner-occupied owner. If I'm an absentee owner of a duplex in town, I cannot short-term rent
No, you cannot.
one unit and have a permit for that, no.
No.
So that's still in my, I guess, it, it falls under the home-sharing umbrella.
I think that's a valid interpretation.
It sounds like we're going to have to make a couple revisions in any event, so we should go in and clean up that language a little bit to make that really clear, if that's the overall council's intent. Because it reads currently, it says if the dwelling units in R2 are under common ownership, only one's permitted for short-term rental. But if they're under separate ownership, both may be, and that would be like a condo situation. I, I just think this will be a little, we need a little clarity in here to, I understand what the council said, I've taken notes, so we can clean that up.
Didn't we punt, we punted the condo townhouse thing to say let the HOAs
Correct.
regulate that? I think that was part of our discussion was that if an HOA decides that they do not want to allow someone who owns a townhouse in their complex to have, to do a home share and rent out one room, that that, that's up to them.
I thought you meant the whole home, I was like, yeah, those are outlawed altogether, okay.
No, I'm just, it, because townhouses are a way of life, right? There's been more townhouses built in this town than anything else in the last decade. And, you know, if you have an ordinance where it totally precludes townhouse, I mean, many of the townhouses in town are like single-family homes. So being able to rent out a room inside my townhouse, if my HOA allows me to do that, then we should be able to permit that.
But if the HOA says just, has no?
If the HOA says no, that's none of our business. HOA can tell you what color to paint your front door.
If it's coming back with those things, can we tighten up the success criteria? I saw there's a paragraph in them, and it lists some of them, it's a great start, but if we have a little time, it'd be good to see those more clearly identified.
And then you want to propose a couple caps? Come back with some number, number days?
I guess the question is, my question to staff would be, have you heard enough from us to be able to make adjustments, or do you need us to read specific language into this? Because we're, we would continue this item, correct, Mark?
Yes, I, I have a, a question on the prohibiting the entire home as a short-term rental. So to, so the intent would be, let's say it's, it's three bedrooms that, or however many bedrooms the max would be, the number of bedrooms that were permitted in the structure minus one? Is that? So if it's a four-bedroom, you could rent out three bedrooms, if it's a three-bedroom, you could rent out two bedrooms. You're not necessarily requiring that the property owner be on-site, but you're saying they can only rent one less than the maximum number? Or, or are you saying that the property owner has to be on-site?
I think property owner needs to be on-site.
We currently require the property owner has to respond within two hours, right? Is that, is it still the?
Because then they're just going to, it's just going to be a loophole.
Yes, but if they don't respond within two hours.
Then they lose the permit.
And again, if it's a loophole and someone is exploiting the loophole, it's going to be reported, it's going to fall on the radar, and it's going to be brought to our attention, and we can address it then. So, I mean, I think it's impossible for us to set policy to close every potential loophole, because we're not capable of thinking as devious as many would, so.
So it's really that you're requiring the property owner to be present?
No, I like yours, if it's a four-bedroom house, you can rent out three rooms. You know, so you're limiting, so if some, I mean, somebody can find that loophole, and they're going to say, okay, well, I have a three-bedroom house, it's maximum two adults per room, so I, it's limited to six adults. If code enforcement shows up and there's 10 adults there and they're all sleeping there that night, right, then you have an infraction.
Okay, and again, I just want to be clear, are, is there going to, is the requirement or the intention to require that the, the property owner is present?
Can we look at the
I mean, I realize they'll come and go from the property, but they're ostensibly going to be there while it's being rented out.
Can we look at the language LA City uses for home sharing? I think you said Culver City says, who else does only home sharing?
That's hired.
Santa Monica and LA.
Culver City's working on an ordinance, I don't, I can get a draft of what they're working on.
Okay, are we good? Well, I, let me ask this, I'm not sure, do we have, do we agree on this whole house thing? If people are going to, if you're going out to Joshua Tree camping for a week, some family from Joshua Tree wants your house for a week, and you deputize somebody to be your house manager, is that something we want to prohibit?
I don't think I made that clear earlier.
I do.
I mean, it would seem to me that, that we have written this, and I'm being devil's advocate, we've written this with so much of the two grand offenders in mind, that everything that they have done is prohibited in this as written. One of them would not be able to apply to begin with, and the second one could not duplicate the scenario which led to so much of our debate.
We can always, I mean, this is a pilot, so let's start small, and then we can always expand if we want to.
Well, we've already written in that if we don't like it, we can stop at any time.
I understand, but why?
We could cancel this in, in May.
And then expand, I mean, we, no, every other city has, is only doing home sharing.
That's not, that's not true, Hermosa is not. I mean, Hermosa has a, a hybrid, and anecdotally, and we only know, we know from COG meetings and, and talking to, to their staff and council members, that their problems disappeared. Right? They went from having an unenforceable scenario to something that is, that, that seems to be working, at least at month, whatever they're in, six, working reasonably well by adopting something that is broadly speaking what we have here. I just don't know if over-complicating this by taking one whole class out is necessarily the right to do. If, if it turns out that we've left a massive loophole and there are, you know, a, a social host ordinance violations galore, looking at you, chief, then, you know, we could shut this down, but I just don't know that we have a, I don't know that we have that scenario.
So, to answer your question, in my opinion, I think what you're describing is not who I from this chair am trying to set policy to prohibit that activity. What I am trying to set policy on is prohibiting the person who is knowingly renting their house out on a weekend, the whole thing, and, and their house is simply a profit center. They hardly live there, it's, that's just, that's what they do.
But isn't that already prohibited in this? I mean, if they're causing a problem.
Only if the neighbors are policing it and calling it in. You know, what you're talking about, you and another family trading, like the house trade type thing, like a VRBO, what you're describing, it's, people aren't coming, you're not going to rent your house to somebody who's going to come party in your house or come make a nuisance for your neighbors, right? So again, so to answer your question, I'm, I wish there was a very clean, simple way to set a policy that would prohibit the one and not the other. I just don't know if there is.
How many, how many homeowners, this is their primary residence where they live, more than six months of the year are going to allow their primary investment vehicle be destroyed on a regular basis? And, and welcome people that are coming in for a football game on Thursdays and Sundays and say, I want to keep doing that again? I think, again, we're, we're penalizing many to address a few. And I think there are plenty of responsible people out there that have an investment, their home, where it's not in their best interest to have a revolving door, bad actors come into their home on a regular basis.
I know, but we're penalizing the neighbors, and they, they're not even making any money.
That's, that's assuming that that scenario that Scott mentioned holds true, which is that it's a revolving door of rowdy NFL fans that come in weekend after weekend.
I mean, we, we have an example of that, that's what happened.
So what happens when you stayed at Airbnb and you have a bad situation? Have you ever, guys ever experienced that? Have you ever stayed in Airbnb? Okay, what happens? Do you know? You have a profile, just like you do on Uber when you get an Uber.
I'm not going to cause the problem, I mean, I'm not going to
I wouldn't bring my, I wouldn't bring my children anywhere.
No, you will create, no, I'm just saying, if you're a bad actor, you do create a problem, and the person, you're not, I know, but I'm saying there are safeguards in place.
There are safeguards with the company.
So that if you are hosting people on a, first of all, you as the guest get rated downly, you know, poorly. Secondly, you as the property get rated poorly, especially if there's a compliance arm in place that's monitoring these things on a regular basis. I just think, again, we're over-complicating this, we're making it far too bureaucratic. If we restrict unnecessarily what people are allowed to do, the chances that we're going to then open it up at the end of a pilot are very unlikely, I would say. are very unlikely, I would say. We're more likely to go broad and say, we have a problem, let's tighten it up. We're not gonna go the other direction, I don't think.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Sure.
You chose to raise your family here. Chris, you chose to raise your family here. Carol, you were born here, kinda like me, so we didn't really have a choice. We just, de facto choice. Did you both choose to live in El Segundo because it was a place where, uh, you know, city regulations were very liberal and they allowed, uh, you know, economic advantages to homeownership here in El Segundo? Or did you move here because this is a, uh, um, a town that has this wonderful uh, connective tissue, fabric of like family and a hometown feel and a blue collar mentality?
That's a leading question, and it's binary. So, I mean, can you give me a little bit of more of an open-ended? Why I chose to live here? Are you being honest? Why I chose to live here? I chose to live here because I felt like this is a great place to raise my children. And I don't think that this new regulation is gonna do anything to change that fundamentally. I think we have smart people on staff and we have the right safeguards in place to protect our interests. I own property here, couple properties here. And I care a lot about this town. I've lived here for twenty-five years. Five kids have been, you know, raised in this town, at least four, anyway. And I care a lot about what happens in this town. And I don't think, I wouldn't sit up here if I thought this was fundamentally gonna change this town. I don't believe it will. And I heard from plenty of people, I don't know how it was for you guys in two thousand eight, I mean, in two thousand, um, eighteen, in twenty sixteen, we heard from a lot of people who did not want us interfering. And I know that this town also cares about the rights of property owners and not being overly restrictive. And when I think conservative, I'm not just thinking about the fabric of the society, I'm also thinking about people's rights as landowners. And as long as it's not interfering with the people next door, I care a lot about that, too.
But we've had people, but we've had people come here.
How many people came, how many people came that were Airbnb people as opposed to people that have been here multiple times for, and as a nuisance Airbnb? What's the ratio?
I- i- if I, if I'm, if I can jump in for a minute, I think though that one thing we may be losing track of is that these are, these are really onerous restrictions. Like, the number of properties as it stands, if we think that our total short-term rental universe is somewhere between eighty and ninety units, and we look at the ones that are been, are being rented, then probably thirty-five to forty of those are not eligible to apply under this current regime. Let alone our two problem properties that, that have been, been addressed. So I think that, you know, I beat this thing up a lot. I beat it up last time. It's not an easy program to comply with, and it's a really easy program to get a foul of, and it becomes very expensive very quickly if you do. So, you know, I, I think that, that there's an element of this that, as it's written, you know, look, there's three of these on my block that no one notices and cares about, right? Because they're, they're home shares or the people who probably won't be able to apply because they're renting out what is now an ADU. So I, I, I just don't know if, that some of these worst offenders we are talking about are unlikely to reappear as this is written. Uh, it's just not an easy program to comply with, and it's certainly not easy under the current state law. Because a lot of the prob, the things that would be problem properties, if they're problem properties, they'll be problem properties because they're ADUs, not because of short-term rentals. That's a bit of my, my reading of it.
Well, it looks like we're at a split, two-two.
I don't think we're that far apart, though.
No, I don't either. So, I mean, if we want to keep this moving, we just have to.
Well, we gotta wait for them to come back anyway, right? Do you need any further direction from us at this point, Mark?
Well. We can go draft additional language, um, but if the council truly is split two-two on direction, you know, we can, we can do what's been suggested tonight, but I don't know that that will resolve the issues. We can do that, if the council wants more time to think about it, we can bring it back. I guess my only concern is if we could do that and we can bring it back, and you could still not be satisfied with the language we have, and that's fine.
Well, then we could be at a standstill in April. We have a fifth member up here.
Well, if we, if we said, one of the issues, right, if we said you can only rent a whole house for thirty days a year, that still doesn't solve this football stadium scenario, right? Because that's, you know, eight home games, you know, if they're here for two days, you know, you can, you can, you can make a long weekend out of each of those. So I don't know, you know, if, if we have a really good middle ground to reach is probably one of the problems. But there's no way that we choke those days down enough that one hand lets people sensibly be able to rent their own house, their home, their whole home if they choose to do some sort of, you know, like the vacation swap or whichever, uh, alternately, it wouldn't address, you know, the, the, the stadium issue. So we may, we may be a dreading mild and fast.
The majority of people that came to speak were home shares.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I, if we, if we're stopping this, we're hurting the home shares, and they're the ones that need it the most because they're doing it the, the most.
Yeah, but it's also the home shares that wish that we didn't regulate it at all.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm, I think that we can find a way to move forward because I think, uh, at face value, all four of us want to move forward with a pilot program.
Yes.
And then it's what, what shape is this gonna look like? And I know, Chris, a lot of your comments last time we spoke about this were centered around, how are we gonna regulate this? Prove to me that we have the ability to enforce these regulations, you know, on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis, you know, with the current staff we have, with, you know, hiring the consultant, having the consultant bring it to us, and having us as a city, uh, capable of the turn time that a resident that's clearly affected by it feels that we are responding in a reasonable, in a reasonable manner.
How about one suggestion, we leave it as is and we pilot it for a hundred and twenty, hundred, what was the original proposal till the end of the year? Like, a really short period of time, a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and eighty days. It isn't that difficult to stand up. Yes, there are some hurdles you have to get over, but really loosen, like tighten this thing up to the point where we're gonna see what happens in six months or a hundred and twenty days, four months, and revisit.
We could also say the same and pilot it with just the home sharing.
Yeah, we could. I, um, as I said several times, I'm not in favor of that, though.
I just thought about something. Greg, I'm gonna need you back at the mic. I'm sorry. Getting your squats in. On a single-family home, how many rooms within that house am I allowed to rent out? At one point, it's, the first time we saw this, it said like one room per night, and then it got altered to two rooms per night.
Do you mean that's a short-term rental?
Yes.
You could rent all of them. All the bedrooms.
You can rent all the bedrooms with separate people in each bedroom. Or is it, because I remember there was some language in there under one rental.
That is correct, because there was a scenario that came up where families, or a family that's dispersed around the country could meet up and they could all have a different room, because they arrive at different times and so forth.
Not only that, we have, we have short-term renters or landlords, whatever you call them, Airbnb hosts, that have multiple people staying in their home in the same night. These people like work on PCH, no issues whatsoever, separate bedrooms.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, I was, I remembered that in one of our early conversations, and why we were like, hey, we need to take out this only one, one-room thing. And we were unanimous about that.
One registration.
Yeah, we wanted to eliminate the one registration.
That's right.
Um, I guess I was just thinking, if you limited, if it's a, I mean, because someone's gonna come and have to get a short-term permit. And when they do that, they're gonna have to state, yeah, I have four bedrooms in my home. Am I allowed to have a permit for four-room rentals in that night? Or if a four-bedroom home, we only issue three, the ability to rent three rooms?
Well, as it stands now, four.
Right, and I guess that, that's, yeah, I don't know. That's where you could essentially be living next door to a hotel. Where you have four separate bookings, the person is, you know, living in the ADU and using the house in the front as a hotel. And that is.
Well, this, I think a simpler solution there is if the host is on-site, you could have more than one booking. If the host is not on-site, it's just one booking.
That's more to regulate, though.
Well, we have, I mean, everything we're doing is more to regulate. We've added a lot of complexity to this.
What I just described, it, it gives me great heart palpitations and heartburn. Someone living in an ADU and renting out four separate bedrooms every night and, and using a home as a hotel. And if I had a hotel on my street where I'm raising my, my children, and it, that changes the, it changes the makeup and the complexity of our neighborhood. And this, and this ordinance allow, will, would allow for that.
Then limit the, I think what I said early on in this conversation was the two things you proposed early on are kinda going after the same thing. You know, either allowing or disallowing home shares entirely, or limiting the number of nights. You could limit the number of bookings in a year, which would get after trying to achieve the same concern you have, which is if you have four available rooms in a five-bedroom, and you're only able to do a hundred and eighty-eight, a hundred and eighty bookings and, you know, you have, if you maximized every room, you'd have forty days of rentals essentially, or whatever, however you do the math, but that would be a, a compromise, I think.
I think that's something that we should, uh, discuss right now, so that we can move forward with that, because I would be on board with that, if you limit the number of bookings.
If I may, we could also just define primary residents to exclude ADUs. That would prevent that problem.
Can you say that again, Greg?
We could define primary residents strictly to exclude ADUs.
Like you can't.
If they live in the house, they can't just move to the ADU and, and short-term rent the house.
Yeah, but there's, that, there's a huge loophole in that.
How so?
Well, you can still claim the front house as your primary residence, even though, like, I'm gonna have an ADU and I'm no, I'm not gonna rent it out, no one's gonna live there. Right? So I could essentially just stay the night in my ADU and rent out every room of my house, and I would still be owner occupied.
But you would be limited.
By a hundred and eighty-two.
Right.
Hundred and eighty-two days, so half the year.
Yeah, there's.
I, I like the booking thing, though, because if someone is going to break up a house that has four bedrooms, that means one night could burn four bookings, if they're gonna use it as a hotel. Whereas if the Boils family rented that house on vacation, and they're there and they're not a problem to the neighbors, that's one car arriving from the airport, one car leaving from the airport. And that is not the problem. That's not who we're trying to regulate against. Correct? Now that, now if you did that, that person, that short-term rental operator would still burn four, or no. Yeah, and essentially, they would still burn four bookings, right?
So what's, what prohibits them from doing, if you, say you have a cap of forty bookings a year, they do forty at Airbnb, forty at air, you know, Airbnb, oh, like how do you?
Consultant monitors.
I think the soft, software monitors all the big ones, right? VRBO, Airbnb, HomeAway.
All of them. But I guess, yeah, if somebody's gonna rent the entire house, rent the four bedrooms, that would be one booking for the four bedrooms. But I do like the booking idea. I think it, it protects us from what we are really getting at, which is somebody who is gonna turn their home into a commercial center and, and a hotel.
Yeah, I totally see your point. Check-in, check-out, kinda, yep.
So how many bookings? Two hundred?
I think we let staff come back with a recommendation on that. I mean, I think, I think we have something to work with, and we haven't heard from Chris.
Is that, is that feasible in, in, in your work with the platform, with, with the, the monitoring services? Is that sort of regulatory step, something that they can do?
I'm gonna think that was, that's simple. That's a line item. Each booking, how much money was brought in, because TOT is based upon the, the amount of money brought in.
I mean, I, I'm amenable.
Okay.
So then we would take the thoughts and do some more research, come back in April when there's five of you?
No, I think we're saying we can go sooner than that.
Yeah.
And come back with Greg's, you know, Sam and Greg's, um, information in terms of what cap makes sense. Uh, what, what did you decide? Oh, on the home share, what about the home sharing item we brought up earlier, you brought up earlier, Scott? That whole strike, can't remember, where did we end up on that? The whole home?
Okay, it was the whole home.
The whole, I think the number, number of bookings is a, is a middle ground there to try to eliminate that.
Okay.
Yeah. And obviously, it's a pilot program. If it doesn't eliminate it, it's gonna come back to us soon enough, or, and it's, I believe that, um, this ordinance is nimble enough for us to make changes if needed, in a, in a timely manner.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the three of you for hearing me out, taking the time to discuss this. I think that, uh, our residents, our town, they appreciate it regardless of what, what side of this argument they're on.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Greg, you got everything you need? Terms of detail, yeah?
Watch the video.
Good luck with that. All right.
So, so that this gets tracked and doesn't have to be re-noticed for another public hearing, um, what's, uh, next meeting is?
The third.
Third.
First third.
Um, I'm looking at Greg to some extent. Um, that's a lot, I mean, is that feasible? Or do we want, do we need like one more meeting after that?
Well, we'll give it our best shot. I think it's feasible.
Okay, well, we can, we'll continue this till that, to the next council meeting, and if it needs to be continued again, we will.
Any motion for that, or no?
No, it just, we'll just, we'll just.
Okay.
It's been publicly said, so people can track it.
All right, thank you, Mr. McLean. Thank, oh, Scott, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, mayors of the council, just for clarification and for the record, for the viewing public and those in the audience, there were some comments made from at least one speaker about allegations of shootings and inappropriate behavior and so on. And I've confirmed with our police chief, we have not had any shootings that we know of with short-term rentals in El Segundo. And I realize the speaker's comments are probably for a broader, um, area, about the nation or the state. But just to be clear, we have not had that experience here in El Segundo.
Well, I think that those concerns speak to the use of these things as gathering places and not lodging places. And I think that the way that this is written is explicitly that this is for lodging and not for gathering. Uh, and I think some of the guidance that I, I would hope we would get out of this if we move forward is that we would like to see code enforcement and the police department err on the side of the neighbors as opposed to the side of the, uh, rentor, so.
We hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Chris. All right, item eleven, we're gonna get through this last item.
Actually, I pulled number eight, oh, eleven, sorry, yeah, eleven.
Yeah.
So authorize a city manager to execute a contract with Reister Precivic Inc., Economic Development and Hospitality Tourism Marketing Services. I pulled this, um, because I know that, you know, we have gone through a transition. Well, we, we started off with a, you know, like a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget for marketing. And then, um, we've now, we're transitioning out of, from another company, plus we've launched the website and we've brought in some new in-house communication, um, functions. So I just wanted you to give an update to the city, to us and the city about what those changes are and where you see this going in the future. Is this something, how do you feel this morphing over time? That, as far as having a budget of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
So I wanted to introduce, before I answer your question, um, our team from Reister is here tonight to answer any questions. And do you wanna, Christina Ravelis will introduce them all.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, hello. This is my first time addressing the council, so thank you. Very pleased. Um, I'm thrilled and excited to introduce, uh, Reister Inc. They're an El Segundo-based marketing agency. Uh, to my right, I have Alan Perkel, Mike Rushing, Ashley Sorenson, and Michelle Dinaras. I hope I pronounce all of your names correctly. Um, go ahead.
Oh, yes, so stay up here with me. So we have been transitioning, um, to bringing more of the, um, the marketing efforts in-house. Uh, particularly Christina has taken on, um, our Business Portfolio Newsletter, which is an economic development newsletter uh, that goes out to the real estate and business community. Um, Mayor Boils will probably remember the SOAR. This is sort of the evolution of SOAR, and we're taking it in-house, and we're designing it, um, through GovDelivery. We already have the template in place, and so that we can do that all ourselves now. Um, and, uh, we've developed a hospitality and tourism newsletter that Christina, um, can send out um, to our list of people interested in things to do, and, um, restaurants, and museums, and, uh, hotels in El Segundo. Um, so that's been taken in-house, and Christina's handling that. Christina's also, um, posting on social media. Um, she's updating destinationelsegundo.com and elsagendobusiness.com. Um, so she's really the transition um, in terms of bringing more of the services in-house. And then Reister will be doing, um, the, um, digital ad placement, um, Google AdWords, and SEO optimization, um, and things, design work that we can't necessarily do in-house. But that's where the balance comes from. We've also hired, instead of using one firm to do, um, PR and marketing, we've hired a commercial real estate specialist, um, to do our PR around, um, economic development. And he's already gotten us several great stories, and he's bringing in, um, reporters to do tours of the city. And he's been really, um, great and very efficient, um, for our, for our budget. So that's the transition, if that answers the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move to approve item number eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, four-zero.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, with council's permission, I'd like to move an item up, and the clerks, of course. Tracy, if you're okay with this, I'd like to have the city treasurer, who I believe is giving her last presentation. I figured because knocked it out, it's gonna be a while, I think, in some of these other items, so. We're gonna move on to item fourteen.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members. The treasury team tonight is actually gonna give the last presentation, so we're all gonna do it together. So we're gonna start off with Deputy Treasurer Latanya Fair, who will give our opening.
Good evening, council, mayor. Tonight, we're gonna be presenting our fourth quarter portfolio, investment portfolio report. I'm not nervous at all.
We're all friends.
This slide shows our December portfolio summary. Our total market value is currently eighty-four point five million, within effective yield of two point two percent. This summarizes our total interest income for the months of October, November, and December. Our interest received is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, four thirty-six point twenty-seven, and effective yield, two point four six. This slide shows that we're in compliance per asset category. And this is just showing our additional compliance per issuer. Dino?
Okay, thank you, Latanya, very good. So now going on yield curve since the last report, you can see the blue one was September, and then the red, December thirty-first, the short-term dropped, and the longer-term picked up. And since then, the longer-term, one to five years, the yield has dropped even some more. But during that time, we made a few investments, and most of them, you can see, are going out to the four and five-year range, building the ladder, and we're able to, you know, secure yields, a lot of CDs above the, the yield curve. Changes as per council member Pimentel's request, it's now a thirteen-month cash flow, and you can see it's still trending, it's trending, you know, similar to the way it's, it has been. And this one here will really show the net change for thirteen months. So you can see how the net change in cash definitely follows a pattern throughout the year. The activity that we've had, basically, we purchased ten investments for three point two million, had eleven maturities for four point seven, and since then, also had one other maturity for one million. Of these, two million dollars were called investments. So the issuer said, we can get a better interest rate, we're gonna pay you off now and reissue at a lower rate. And that's part of the reason we've been investing less, most of the stuff out there is callable right now, and we're trying to avoid this situation messing with our ladder. We haven't made any investments since December thirty-first, but we have moved ten and a half million to cash, had one bond matured, or, I'm sorry, called. You can see the rate on the investments versus the maturity is only, you know, point one zero three percent. And that's because as all those rates have come down, we haven't been able to purchase higher-yielding investments. So we're, we've had one point five million more mature, and of course, we still manage our bank balances. The Fed projecting GDP to drop a little bit this year, and pretty much stabilize over the, the next couple of years. Unemployment is still down in the three and a half to three point six range. Inflation has started to come up, you can see it's just above two percent, where the Fed has been trying to get it, so that's good for holding the rate steady. And the Fund Fed projection, you can see December, they're projecting twenty twenty for maybe one increase. You know, who knows, I got an email from a broker this morning, said with the coronavirus and other things, there could be one or two cuts this year, so no, no idea really where they're gonna go, it changes every quarter. And then Krista has a few things she would like to cover.
So, oh, you're gonna, you're in charge of the clicker, okay. So the last several slides are kind of when I started here in two thousand thirteen, and kind of where we've come. So you can see on the slide, so when I came in January thirteen, uh, January of two thousand thirteen, we had eighteen million dollars invested. Today, we have sixty-three point four million dollars invested, which is a net change of actually a hundred and fourteen individual securities. So just shows our commitment to investing the city's fund on a continuous basis. This is kind of the yield curve that we've been dealing with, so the red line is the latest version, it shows how the yield curve has been flat, and I talked a lot about it. The one line in the middle, it kind of peaks up and it bends, actually, that's an overlay of our short-term local agency investment pool rates, so when yield curves are flat, we were able to kind of utilize the short-term in that pool to make up some of those deficits. So this is a really telling slide, so when I got here for the fiscal year ending two thousand thirteen, we made two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in interest. The last ending period, we made one point seven million dollars in interest. So this just goes to prove, you know, our active investment strategy, continually investing as money comes due, you know, comes into the city. And then the yield is significantly increased, even with the low yields that we have in the fixed income market, we were still able to take advantage when we could. So I talk a lot about the ladder, so I'm very excited by this slide, because this proves what we tried to do, we actually implemented. The red is what I came into when I first started with the city, so it was a lot of short-term money in our local pools and in the bank, and we have significantly spread it out on the longer term, just taking advantage of what we could in the yield curve. This is also one of my kind of proud moments, came into the portfolio, so the chart at the top is two thousand thirteen. If you look at cash, immediate, life, law, and life, that's all cash sitting idle, that's basically idle cash. And then the other half, or less than half, is the money that was actually invested in fixed income securities. So with all of our efforts, we've been able to diversify the portfolio, add in different asset classes, municipal bonds, super nationals, corporate bonds, maxing out on CDs, and El Segundo benefited a lot from investing in CDs, those are traditionally the more higher-earning securities. And this also shows diversification to bulletproof us from change in interest rates and other such things. So what had we accomplished, I don't like to say I, because it's a we. When I came in in two thousand thirteen, we wrote an RFP, well, I wrote the RFP, but we wrote an RFP, we went out and we had to change the banking, because without proper banking efficiency, you can't do anything else effectively. The new banking structure had a cash concentration account, ZBA accounts, I can go online every day, click a button, and I can see our cash position, as simple as that. The prior structure, I couldn't do that. We looked at how we spent our money and how the money came in, we did long-term cash flow forecasts, because we have to predict how much money do we need and when do we need it. We implemented internal controls, one of the things when I came in, you could initiate a wire, approve the wire, send the wire, and book the wire. So we stopped doing that, so we, none of us can do that, so those are some of the things we did. Created the first quarterly investment report, which is what I'm doing here tonight, to provide the public a glimpse into what I do, I'm all about transparency, and to educate everyone in the city about what we do. We looked at our portfolio management software and upgraded that to a more simpler version, and it's very user-friendly, and it helps us account for all of the securities we buy. We developed a liquidity target for daily reporting. So every morning, Dino sends me an email of where we stand with all of our investments, what's in the bank, what's coming out, what's, what investments have we bought and what's maturing, so I can see. Also, the finance director gets a copy of that as well. We defined our investment process, and what I mean is, do we want a ladder structure barbell, how do we want it? We committed to the ladder, which is, our peers in the industry are replicating that, they're teaching us, you know, this is a good bulletproof structure for local agencies. We implemented that process, we added new asset classes that hadn't been added before to take advantage of diversification and yield. We, I overhauled the investment policy, we brought it to you, we put constraints where we didn't feel comfortable in investing, we didn't want to put all of our eggs in one basket. So that was approved in April two thousand sixteen, we updated it in two thousand eighteen to add the California Asset Management Program. I got the investment policy certi, investment policy certified by the California Municipal Treasurers Association, which demonstrates our commitment to having an up-to-date and current policy in line with the California Government Code, and what I'm most proud of is educating the treasury team. So Dino's a certified fixed income professional, so am I, so is Tim in the audience, hi, Tim. And we spend a lot of time being educated and staying current. So with that, I wanna say thank you, and it's been a great ride, and Latanya said I need to drop the mic. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
I just accolade, accolades, I mean, wow, what about, how about that for like, you know, before and after? Amazing, the number that stuck in my head was like the one to one point five million delta in interest income annually. Sure Joe appreciates that. Fact that you protected our assets, you did an incredible job, we're so lucky to have you, thank you for everything you've done. Is this really gonna be the last opportunity? Well, Scott, where's the, like, we need the fanfare?
Key to the city.
Yeah.
We're planning a.
Going off to the desert.
We're planning a pub crawl soon, though.
Pub crawl, okay, I'll be signed up for that.
Oh.
Oh, okay, so you'll be there for the April.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there for the swearing-in, absolutely, absolutely.
This is the final quarterly report for her.
Final quarterly report, yeah, I would absolutely be there for the swearing-in.
Excellent. Dino, please, yeah.
So Krista, you know, thank you for your leadership, you told them all about what we did, but you didn't tell them what went on behind the scenes. So I just have a little history here, really quick. You know, that in January thirteen, you decided, you know, to become this treasurer for the city of El Segundo. You know, the whole family came, they were very excited to get, see you off on this new journey. You came in ready to work and ready to rule the treasury kingdom, so. They gave you a parade, there's Tim again right there. So you said, hey, I'm gonna do this again, this is cool. And even though, even though you started to come back and work with these two characters, you, you, you made it again. But they did give you a better car to ride in, so that was pretty cool. But, and then the next year, though, they dropped you back into the Mini, so. But once they found out you weren't running again, there was no car, so you had to walk. So, but your, but, but your strong team made it to the end, so that was good, all the way down to Imperial and back. And then you were able to get this great shot of you, and L'Oreal called us if you wanted to be a model, but, but I told them, no, you were gonna be too busy golfing. So, good luck in retirement.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Top Golf in Vegas. So.
Thank you.
I figured that was a fitting way to send you off.
Yeah, no, I think so.
Alright, tough act to follow, whoever follows Krista. Alright, let's go on to, let's see, public hearing, but we're gonna take a break, actually, Scott, it's eight seventeen, we'll come back at eight thirty.
That's the only question I have.
Okay, and let's see, city attorney will read the resolution by title only.
Mayor and council, a resolution adopting new fees for the memory row three and binge donation program is ready for adoption.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Questions, but nobody's got a second.
Sorry to keep you, Gail, long. All right, next up, we have the 2019 crime report being presented by Chief Whalen.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening along with many members of my team to talk primarily about crime last year, but also we have a few other things to talk a little bit about what has gone on at the police department over this past year. So just as a reminder and for people at home, we report out to the state DOJ, which then finds its way to the FBI on a monthly basis and then aggregated annually what is our uniform crime reporting. These are numbers that over 20,000 agencies across the country report to the FBI. And it's a very antiquated system. It goes back to the early 1900s. It was an attempt to try to measure what's going on and and see how different entities compare with each other. There's actually, this is the last full year of UCR data. So I'm sorry, it's the last year we're gonna do, we're gonna report out in 2021, a combination of UCR and NIBRs, which is the new system, and then the year after that will be a NIBRs only reporting. We'll talk more when we get to that, but that will likely, because of the way that is, the numbers, it's, we're not gonna be able to do year-to-year comparisons anymore. They won't be, they won't be the same. So happy to report that we saw 10% decrease from 18 to 19 last year. So 708 total crimes. And while we celebrate the decrease, we also recognize that that's 708 people who were victimized by crime. We don't take that lightly. So I want you to know that, that we are happy with our numbers. As I always say, El Segundo is a very safe community, but we're not crime-free. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we can do collectively as a community in there. Down at the bottom is a chart which shows our five-year average of 734 total crimes, and we are below the five-year average, which is good. And if you look to the far left, that's in there just to highlight what I and my peers believe is the impact of Prop 47. So that has our total crimes, the year that Prop 47 was enacted, it took, it was immediately in November of 2014. And we can, we can see the, just a steady climb of crime following that.
Can I ask also one question there, too? So even though property crimes are down, a lot of times, especially in stores, they're not actually calling in crimes anymore, correct? Because they, they're, if they're over under $1,000 or $999, they're not even bothering. So is that really a true number, then?
So I don't know that we have data to support that, that notion. It is now crimes which were felonies in the past are now misdemeanors. But we haven't seen where that's caused store people to not wanna call us. We're still getting phone calls out there. And as you're gonna see in a minute when I break down what's going on, that's also led to an increase in robberies because of more people are committing shoplifts. This is a breakdown of our violent crime. I hate the fact that we use violent crime because that's, we'll talk about the boogeyman crimes in a little bit, but you know, when you say violent crime, that tends to suggest people are gonna get hurt. And then you can just see on here the quick breakdown of where we had increases and the decreases, and then I'm gonna get into each one here now. So this year, we had five rapes. Of those five, two were what we call statutory rapes, were rapes only by, by the fact of the age of the victim and the suspect. In all of these cases, the offender and the victim knew each other, and in three of them, they were actually in a, in a significant dating relationship prior to the crime occurring. Of our robberies, 28, or 93% were the use of force. And as I mentioned before, we've seen a trend in our shoplifting crimes where if the person is stealing something and they go to walk out the front door and the store clerk stands in front of them and they shove them to get out of the way, we've now elevated that to a robbery and we have to report that out as a robbery. A lot of us don't agree with that. There's a case decision, Estes was the case where it says that that's considered the crime of robbery. Two of those, we're still, my staff and I are still debating whether we had two or three involving the use of a firearm. There was one call in particular, it was over at the Moose Lodge where the person thought they might have seen a gun. We're not entirely sure about that. We're still working that crime. So for now, the way we're standing it is two involving the use of firearm and 28 involved the use of force, so 93%. When I talk about boogeyman crimes again, this is it, of all the robberies, only two involved the use of firearm that we can unequivocally state right now. The rest of those were forced. Domestic violence, nine times out of 10, it's stealing car keys or a cellphone or something from the victim. Our aggravated assaults, this is an assault that leads to serious injury. And you can see that the vast majority of these are domestic violence situations. Now we're on to property crimes. We saw some really good decreases here in our property crime categories. You remember last year, this is where we had somewhat of a big bump, especially in our commercial burglaries. And getting more into detail on these, this breaks down largely where our larcenies are occurring from. Buildings and vehicles account for, for the most of it. Buildings is along PCH and east of generally office buildings. The people will go into those buildings because people in our offices leave their purses and laptops and those types of things unsecured. And most often, or many times in those buildings, it's not really any security that you have to go through to get to it. We meet on a monthly basis with security professionals from within our business community, and this is one of the things we talk to them about, is trying to prevent these crimes and come up with ways to harden the target.
Have we seen any issues in storage lockers in the past year? I know that was a huge issue in 2018.
I have that on another slide. Yes, sir. And, but the answer is no, not quite the issue we had last year. This is our residential burglary breakdown. I really like to highlight this as well because I think this is another crime that, that people get scared about. That's I'm home and somebody breaks into my house. So we had a significant decrease, number one, in our residential burglaries. But of all of our residential burglaries, only three result where, where somebody was home at the time the crime occurred. The rest of those, 87% were carports and garages, and that's important because those are preventable. That's when people leave their garage doors up, leave them up at night, or they're putting things in their carports and they're not locking them up, or they're not locking them up securely, and as a result, they're getting stolen. If you go into a carport and steal something, it's classified as burglary and not larceny. And here's the, the commercial burglary breakdown, and you'll see that our storage lockers account for 30% or 31 of those. That's down significantly from where we were at last year. We've had, after I presented to you a year ago, talked about, we weren't getting a lot of cooperation from some of our storage venues in town. That has changed and proactive steps have been put in place, which I think has led to a reduction in these crimes. Vehicle burglaries are, is not its own category per se, it's part of larceny, but it's a crime of interest, and so we broke it out so you could see a little bit about what this was about. So about half, half of our vehicle burglaries are impacting or occurring within our residential streets. We put this slide up, this is, our crime analyst put this together just to talk a little bit about what we've seen this last year and what we are seeing on a go-forward basis. Even though violent crime was up, it's really not a trend that is impacting our community. It's, the, the numbers are just so low. But these are what we're seeing. The retail booster crew thefts, these are the gangs out of Los Angeles. They're coming in, they're going to, especially our beauty supply stores that we see out at the Pointe Plaza, those types of things. It's easy, scoop up a bunch and they run out. When they try to stop them, then that leads into the potential for robbery. We are talking to, our, our area commander and our community lead officers are educating the retail community out there about how to act whenever you, you know, see a shoplifter in your store. The idea is we want you to call us and let us come out and deal with it. Don't put yourself in harm's way. We're fortunate that none of these have turned violent. What I say violent, I mean, I guess a push and a shove could be considered violent, but it's, it's only a matter of time where one of these people might have a weapon on them, and we don't wanna see somebody get hurt trying to protect from a property crime. Porch package thefts, that's a, that's a trend that's impacting everybody. And you see it, you can drive around El Segundo every day and you'll see packages on people's porches and people going around stealing them. Gym locker burglaries, although it's not as significant as the others, it's important for people to know about. This is a trend that's probably been going on for about 10 years or so now. People, many times, will not even lock the lockers in the gyms. And so people will go into the locker room and they'll just open lockers up until they find one where people don't even put a lock on it, put their wallets, car keys and everything in there, take the car keys, go steal the car, or go out to the parking lot and burglarize the car and take whatever's in it out. Even with that, they've been known to go in and shimmy the locks that are on lockers and steal stuff out there. So we're working with the, the gyms in town to try to get them to educate their members on that. Now I'm gonna jump into calls for service. Calls for service increased by 7% this year. The most significant calls for service increase was what we call security checks. Security checks is really proactive policing. This is when the officers are out there and they know of an area that they wanna spend a little time in looking for criminals, and so they say what we call code out, they, they go out on a security check. And that's up 19%, and I think that's just a direct attribution to having more police officers on the street. So they're out doing more proactive police work. I'm gonna talk in a minute about concerns on a go-forward basis, and you've heard me talk about before hotels and that with the new stadium coming online, that, that's a concern that we have. This slide represents the impact hotels had on our calls for service last year. So hotel activity is one that we can directly attribute, attribute to the address of the hotel. Hotel RDs is one that occurred around a hotel. So to be fair, that doesn't mean that that hotel was the proximate cause of that call. However, in many of the cases, we know that to be true, whether it was a car leaving and we stopped it away, or there was a fight in the parking lot, or whatever the case might be. So 25% of our calls were in and around hotels. Again, we can't draw a direct correlation to hotel RDs, but it's an important enough of a number that we're paying attention to it. And then our concerns for 2020, they've been talked about before, the SoFi Stadium. There's gonna be a home football game every weekend during football season. They're already booking many other events. I was told last week that they're, that the stadium's way over budget and they're trying to get a lot more things in there. Apparently, the, there's a wrestling, I'm not a wrestling person, but the World Grand Prix of Wrestling or WrestleMania or something like that's coming, that's apparently, it's more popular than the Super Bowl, what I'm told. So, you know, and all these concerts that they're getting, these are things that will directly impact our community. And if you've ever been to a football stadium and gone to one of the hotels that are around it afterwards, and you see that all the fans that have been drinking all day, when they come back to the hotel bar, they're continuing their activities. And so we are now, my team and I, we're talking about how are we gonna staff on the weekends, redirecting assets to our weekends to deal directly with any issues that we might come up with. We've, we have a meeting coming up next month with all of the hotel managers to talk about what their plans are, what their security plans are, how do they intend to mitigate the impact that this is gonna have. And then additionally, the security breakfast group I told you that we have already been meeting with on a monthly basis, we're working with them as well because they do cross over into the, the hotel area. Topgolf, we have that on there. You know, the reality is Topgolf isn't gonna be online probably in 2020. But nonetheless, the fact that that facility's gonna be there and be a construction site is something we wanna pay attention to, wanna make sure that we're not having construction site thefts and those types of things. All right, I know I'm moving kinda fast. I wanna talk just briefly about Alucid. This is, I know you, you all received an email about a month or so ago about this new technology that we're employing here at El Segundo. And this is really neat because what this does is it proactively reaches out to the community to find out what their concerns are. It's not waiting for them to call us because they've reached the tipping point because something's happened so many times. And so this company actually will reach out through social media, through pop-up ads, and ask people to take a survey. And it, it's not just a blanket approach to it, they actually try to mirror the demographics of the community so that we're getting a very good representative sample of what, of the different aspects of our community and how they feel. And, and this top score was actually the first week of February, and I'm, I'm using it just to illustrate an example. I was surprised, quite frankly, by what it shows. I would've thought homelessness to be near the top of that. Not that we, we hear about traffic complaints a lot, I just thought homelessness would be, would be near the top. Now, in talking to other chiefs who have employed this technology, they say it takes a period of time to let things settle, to really start to see how that is going to impact. What else is important about that is residents, they're not on there, have, or whoever's taking a survey has the ability to write in comments. So they can say the stop sign at Main and whatever IC speeders. So that's gonna be a tool for us that we're probably gonna get these weekly that we can give to our watch commanders to disseminate patrol briefings, to have our officers proactively go out and deal with the issues as we see them, instead of waiting for them to come to us. And then the bottom part is, is pretty neat, it's a trust score, and they don't ask you, ask, do you trust the police department? There's a couple of questions they ask that they correlate the trust. And so that's eight point, it's a scale of zero to 10, 10 being most, and so 8.2. And then safety is how safe do you feel? And so it's a 7.9 out of 10. And I'm told by the company that, that we're actually one of the highest of, of all the, the police departments they deal with in both categories. And I know there's probably an interest to say, well, how are we gonna benchmark this? What does this mean? And quite frankly, we don't know yet. The sample size, or I should say that who we can compare to, from what I know about those agencies, aren't necessarily similar to us. Now granted, if they tell me I'm higher than them, I'd love to come in and benchmark to them so we can show that. But I think, I think moreover, we're gonna start with benchmarking to ourself on a, on a, you know, on a monthly basis, whatever it is, to see if we're trending in one direction or another and try to figure out why that's occurring. But I'll know more, as we go through this next year with Alucid, I'll know, I'll have a better handle on, on how we're gonna report that and in what format we're gonna report that out. But I'm sure that there would be an interest in the community seeing this on a regular basis. Recruitment last year, this, just a snapshot, we did a lot of work. You know that we, we hit full staffing in December. We ended the year at about 60 officers, which is, I believe, eight more than we had a year prior at the, the January mark. But in addition to police officers, there's a lot of other positions that we hired for. And that top bullet point says it all. I mean, there was 1,137 applications to pull 10 people. It's just, it, it is a monumental task to hire police officers, and the team that's doing it is doing it around the clock and, and they're really doing good work. We have a lot of good people in the process now, and I think we're in a very good place. And council, largely thanks to the support that you guys have shown through the years and, and making us a priority, and I do really appreciate that. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Sorry I was talking real fast, but certainly available, my team and I, to answer any questions that you may. Wait a second, sorry. There was one more thing I wanted to talk about. Automated license plate readers. October is when we were live with that. Since October, we had 1,830 hits. Now, hit could be for a felony warrant, a wanted subject for a felony, missing person, protective order, sexual offender, stolen license plate, stolen vehicle. The vast majority of these were stolen license plates, 1,679. That, while it might seem like a lot, many times under stolen license plates, there's still one plate left on the car and the person doesn't realize, or they, they reported it stolen, but they, they didn't realize that not take that plate off and get another plate, and so those go through and trip the system. I don't have, I can't tell you because we can't pull the data of all of those, and probably not the stolen license plates, but the, the stolen vehicles and the wanted persons were little over 100. We've made several car stops and arrests related to that, and I, and we tried to pull that data and, and we just can't do it because it, we pull arrests on one side, but it doesn't correlate to an ALPR hit on the other. But I wanted you guys to know that, that it is a pretty significant number. There are four very significant cases that ALPRs are instrumental in, and I have to, because they're all four active cases, I, I can't really get into detail. A couple of them, one of them's a robbery and a couple of them involve stolen vehicles. But the use of the ALPR system has led to suspect information and bringing in additional resources because of the size and complexity of the investigation. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Oh, several, I'll defer to my colleagues.
I have one question about human trafficking or human slavery, human slavery. I know that with the Super Bowl, they were talking about, you know, they were gonna, looking for an increase in human slavery around that time. Do we anticipate that with, with the, with the expansion of the, with the football stadium? And then I know, and the second question is, I know I'd reach out to you about putting up posters in hotels. Has that been complete and do we have awareness posters or awareness things about human slavery out in, in our public places?
So we have started the process of distributing the, the posters related to human slavery, and I'll, I'll ask for a second for an update on that. It is reasonable to believe that with the opening of the stadium that that will increase. And so we are partners with the FBI on their, on their, on a federal human trafficking task force, which brings additional resources here for us to do sting operations and that type of proactive policing for that crime. Okay, all of the hotels have the posters up.
Perfect, thank you.
Of those 700 crimes, do we have a sense of how many arrests, what our clearance rate on these is?
Well, each category has a different clearance rate. No, I don't have that. So I can get that to you, but I don't have that readily available.
Just curious because particularly for violent crimes, right, people will wanna know what the resolution is. I mean, it, it sounds as though with the, the five rapes, that, that likely, if those people are known to one another, that's a pretty easy arrest to make, to, and, and the, whether the DA chooses to prosecute or not is, is obviously not your department. But I think people would wanna know that if we've got a shoplifting epidemic, are we able to make arrests based upon that data?
So do I hear, I thought I heard somebody coming up here for the rescue. So right now, what I can tell you is this, with the, there, there's a 20% clearance rate on the rapes, and largely that's because of the unwillingness of the victim to move forward. So in the case where we could, we have a 20% clearance rate. On the robberies, we have a 43% clearance rate. On aggravated assaults, we have a 57% clearance rate. And I don't have that breakdown for the property crimes.
Do you think with aggravated assault, is that a unwillingness of victims to move forward in that as well? Given that most of those are domestics?
I don't, I will ask, I don't know that we're gonna have, be able to answer that question. Tasha, do you have a, you'll come up to the mic if you have any. You've met Tasha about a year ago, I think it was, she's our crime analyst.
So this was the breakdown, and guessing that maybe they want us to elaborate a little bit more, but.
Well, so for the, for the 43% that did not result in arrest, do we know why?
Yes. So, let's see. Is your log in? Press charge is.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna, do you have that written down? You know what, we'll be sitting here all night.
Yeah.
So why don't I get, I'll get you clearance rates by crime type and then we'll send that to city council.
It's when we talk about the perception of safety, a big piece of it is, is both a sense of how many crimes are occurring, but also a sense of the crimes are resolved when they call in, because that speaks a, a little bit to, to Councilmember Pierstix note that, you know, we want people to be encouraged to call police and we don't want this, a sense of helplessness about them. And I think part of that, you know, no spy, thank you for throwing in the license plate reader piece, because obviously that's an enormous amount of data that we capture on the movements of people on the auspice and guarantee that that is making us safer. But as I sort of said before, you know, crooks might be stupid, but they're not dumb, right? They understand the technology as well. There's a reason you're catching stolen license plates because they know if they come here, you're reading their license plates, right? That, that is a, that presupposes a criminal technique and attribute. I mean, the, the LAPD's numbers, you probably saw in the, in the paper, are remarkable. There are 350 million captures of people's movements around the city of Los Angeles. 400,000 they associate with a crime or investigation. So that's about 1/10 of 1%. So when you are off-siteing into wherever our data housing company is, all of your daily movements, understand it's for four active investigations and, and a couple arrests and a lot of stolen license plates. So that's all.
Thanks, Chris. I have a question. I read recently, I can't remember if I forwarded to you chief or Scott, but there was a community that had, and I know we do this a little bit, but I think it's kinda retroactively, not as much proactively, where they partner, there's some technology to partner with security cameras that are installed on people's homes and commercial properties to... Was it with Ring? Is that what it was? I don't, yeah, I don't remember what the technology was, but is that something that we've considered or?
The police chief will speak to it. I believe it was Riverside or somewhere out there.
Well, Murieta was the local agency that's doing it. And what they're doing is soliciting the community to, if they want, to let them know that they have security cameras. And then in the event there's a crime, the police can reach out to the people on the list and ask if they have anything related to it. We've researched that. It's, that's a relatively new thing that police departments are doing. So there really isn't any feedback as to how effective it is yet. There is one other police department that actually waived alarm permit fees if the, if the person would be willing to provide that information. Now, that's any security camera. Ring is trying to be virtual crime prevention. And they're doing some pretty neat things where we've applied to sign up with Ring, where if we have a crime, we can push out through the Ring network that we've had a crime and this is what we're looking for. Can you please check your security devices and let us know? And if they have something, they have the ability to electronically send us that information through the Ring system. If you have Ring, you know that you can also put your own alerts on Ring. Hey, I just saw this person, they look suspicious, they came up to my house or whatever. We don't have the ability to get that yet. We're still working with Ring to see how that works. So the answer is yes, we are proactively looking at those things. And to the point where we sign people up, that's certainly something that we're considering if it looks like it's, it's worth the time and effort to do it. Because you still have to, see, even if we have it, it's a good tool, but it, it still doesn't eliminate the need for detectives to go out and canvass the area because we can't assume we have an all-encompassing list.
Right, right. Okay, thanks, chief.
One question before you go. Package thefts. When you get a call for one, is it pretty typical that you're getting it somewhat in, you know, can you draw a map? Like, well, okay, this thief hit a couple different houses? Or is it typical one-offs? Like they come in, they take one package and they bail? Because my thought is, to the point on the Ring thing, is I get an alert and I just watched somebody walk up to my porch, take my package, and I could, and I could see that they're in a white Toyota Camry. Right? And that's, I'm, I'm seeing that in essentially real time if I happen to have my device on me. And I can call 911, say, hey, white Toyota Camry just stole a package off my porch, this is my address. Is the, are the chances that that car is still in town likely driving around looking for other packages? Is, is there a hyper-harability or are we thinking they take the package and they bail?
I think, and Tasha can correct me if she disagrees, because she's into this on a daily basis, but I, I think that they are looking around. They're crime of opportunists. Now, whether they take one and run or they go for more probably depends on how long they've been in the community driving around. So if they just got in and they happened to strike gold and grab a couple of packages off a porch, because we do know that we've gotten hit by same physical description, and in some cases, we've gotten descriptions off of cameras and they've matched other things that we've seen. And while we don't have the exact breakdown, most of the people victimizing our community are from outside our community. It's not people who live here who are driving around stealing packages, at least from the arrest data that we have in the past.
But we highly encourage all residents, if they have an alert and they're seeing someone physically, like in real time stealing something off their porch, to call 911 at that moment.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. 911, don't be afraid of 911. I know sometimes, I don't, maybe I don't have the business line, call 911. If you're in doubt, call 911. And I promise you, we will come and investigate whatever the situation is. We, we have the availability, we want to come, and, and the only way we can effect an arrest, the easiest way we can effect an arrest is if we get immediate notification of a crime in progress.
Because I think I'm not alone in, in hoping that one day I watch that person steal that package off my porch and as they go to get in their car, one of you guys pull up and say, hi, how you doing? Like, look at that, and us capture it.
Right.
I mean, I, I think any law-abiding citizen always hopes for instant, you know, instant karma. And so I just was thinking that if we can do that, or if you're encouraging that, that we make sure that the people in this town know, please call 911 immediately so we can stop this.
Yes, immediately, call 911.
Okay.
And then I also, also about calling 911, I wanna reiterate that you really want people to call, if they see a homeless person, to call 911 so that we can offer services, correct?
No.
No?
I, I mean, I, we want 911 when it's, it's a, if it's an emergency situation, which would be a crime in progress or something. We, we do have, to that exact point on our website, we talk about what to do when you encounter a homeless person. Just because they see somebody they think might be homeless. Just because they see somebody they think might be homeless, certainly they could call the police department and then we can come and check on that. But if the person's not looking like they're in need, we wouldn't want you to call 911 for that. But if anybody has any questions on homelessness, we have all of, all of resources and the things that we're doing are available on our website that we would encourage people to look at. And resources if they know somebody. And while we're on the topic of it, one thing I would mention, what makes it hard for us to get people placed or services is the altruistic nature of our community. And we had an individual that was at Library Park. Well, he was getting money, he was getting food, he was getting clothing. And he would tell our officers, I don't need to go to a shelter, I got it all right here. And I know that's tough to hear, because people want the help, the nature of this community is they want to be helpful. But sometimes by being helpful, it, it precludes us from getting the people the services they really need. And it often takes us going out multiple, 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 multiple times talking to an individual to get them, or him or her, the help that they need. And sometimes they're in a shelter for a night and they're back out on our streets. It's a, it's a never ending process, but we're on it.
And after, wow, I was really close to the mic, I haven't done that before. After riding along with Officer Marco Lemus, right? And then, geez, Nicole?
Nicole.
I, I'm super impressed, I would encourage you to do it, it was really, it was actually, I learned a lot. And they knew everybody, they had an inventory on everybody that was out there. And there was one person, I think, that we encountered that they hadn't encountered before. And they quickly evaluated the situation, but odds are that they're aware of that. People, they, they're closely monitoring all these folks, which is great. And speaking of which, do we get our homeless count numbers yet, the official numbers?
We have an idea what our official numbers are going to be, but they haven't released our official numbers yet.
When can we expect that, you think? That's a county, right, county?
Yeah, yes, sir, I think that is closer to May, that they were reset. So we'll have, we'll have information before you, before that becomes public from the county.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Thanks chief, thank you all, appreciate it.
Alrighty, we are up to, let's see, number 16. Authorization to conduct a parks and recreation needs assessment prior to renovating the El Segundo Teen Center at 405 East Grand Avenue and Miss Pettit, up again.
All right, good evening again. So as you know, many of you participated in the El Segundo High School Civic Day Project in May 2019. And that project really provided some insight into the local youth's opinions about the current state of the teen center. All four of those project teams at the time recommended that the skate park be redesigned and that that was the main attraction of the current site. Subsequently, in the 2019, 2020 budget process, the city council identified the need to address the physical infrastructure at the El Segundo Teen Center, which includes approximately 5,500 square foot building, the outdoor basketball court, and an outdoor skate park. And the city council allocated $800,000 for renovation of that property. However, the scope of the renovation was not yet determined. And our initial research indicates that the skate park renovations alone could cost upwards of $500,000. Building renovations can be into the millions of dollars. The teen center primarily focuses and functions as a drop-in activity center with limited programming. These types of traditional standalone teen center models are declining in popularity and we have experienced a downward trend in daily attendance over several years. At the same time, deferred maintenance has, has left the building unattractive and uninspiring. So internal discussions between Recreation Parks Department, the Public Works Department, and the City Manager's Office, at this time, staff is proposing a more strategic approach to planning for the future renovations of the site. And we are recommending that we hire a consulting firm to help us conduct a needs assessment of the recreation facilities, primarily focusing on the teen center area and potentially including other sites such as the clubhouse. These interior community gathering spaces are the cornerstone of the city's recreation, social, and enrichment opportunities. And it is possible that the teen center complex could be utilized in a way that better meets the needs of a wider community. Understanding what those needs is critical to this and other future capital projects. So tonight, what's in front of you is staff is requesting the authority to solicit a request for proposals to conduct a parks and recreation needs assessment for this particular purpose. And it would be in an amount not to exceed $50,000 from the already allocated project budget. There have been several conversations, again, between Public Works Director Ken Berkman, myself, my staff, the City Manager's Office, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have with this approach.
And I think it's important that we took a holistic view, look at that area. I, it's interesting to, if you're going to encapsulate, encapsulate the clubhouse as well, just, I just want to make sure that we partner with the Boy Scouts on that, on that area. Are you, are you talking about the club, the clubhouse?
Talking about the Georgia Gordon Clubhouse.
Okay, but if we were looking at, because who owns the, who owns the land where the, the clubhouse is?
The Scout House is also a city property.
I mean, if we're going to look at it, I mean, I'd like to make sure that we're not, that we look at that area as well with the understanding that we have to provide a Scout House, so I just, I don't know, I just want to make sure.
Do we?
Yeah, I think, yeah, understanding the timeline and the scope of the project, this, we'll work with a consultant and really identify what, what areas to focus on. Could be a multi-phased approach into more of a master planning scenario, but I think once we start talking to consultants, we'll have a better idea of how quickly we can address this particular site and if we can incorporate others as well.
I just, I want to clarify that, are you, what are you looking to do, Carol?
No, I, when she said clubhouse, I was thinking clubhouse, Scout House. But you're, you're actually talking just.
I'm talking about the clubhouse at Rec Park, only because the Recreation and Parks Commission over the last several years have prioritized that as an area of need as well. And there could be compatible uses with those two interior spaces being big community center.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not actually considering the Scout House as part of this evaluation.
Wasn't something on my radar.
Okay, okay, thanks.
But then I was thinking, since it is adjacent to the skate park, you know, is it, would it be worth our while to relocate the Scout House to another location so that we could have a more comprehensive space? I don't, you know, I mean, I don't want to take it off the drawing board if.
Yeah, I, that is a, they've, I mean, how long have they been, they've been there so long, there's so much legacy in that building. I mean, doesn't mean it's, it's something we couldn't consider, I just think that that would be fairly common.
I don't want to take away the Scout House from the Scouts, but I just think, if we're looking at it, let's look at it and then.
Just so I'm clear, because I may have misunderstood this from some of our previous discussions, is, are we just looking at this site in the clubhouse? Or is this the consulting firm going to look and see, here are our Rec and Park assets, whether it's the, the checkout building, Jocelyn, you know, the, the playgrounds, and say, here's what, here's what we think fits the public populace demand and here's how we're going to allocate meeting spaces and buildings and bathrooms and all of those things? Or is it just this spot?
We're open, I think, given the budget and talking to consultants, we'll see what those proposals allow us in terms of the size of the scope of the project. Knowing that this is a high priority and we want to get back to the city council during the strategic planning months with some report, we'll have to work with the consultant on how much we can tackle in this initial phase.
Sure.
Can I ask a on-subject, off-subject question?
Sure.
And this might be fall under your realm mark, the skate park. Aren't, we're insured for injuries at the skate park, correct?
We have liability insurance, yes.
Does that liability insurance require participants to wear helmets at the skate park?
It does, we don't supervise that, it's, it's an unsupervised park with signage and that's the enforcement tactic.
Got it.
And, and when the park was open some time ago, this was discussed, the signage versus having active supervision and, one, it's expensive to have active supervision and two, that puts more responsibility actually on the city than posting signs and saying, this is your responsibility. And when the park was built, the state legislature had put in immunities for skate parks and then once a bunch of them got built, they took the immunities away, so.
So currently, right now, this, the litigious state we live in, somebody falls, head injury, they could sue the city. Obviously, anybody can sue the city.
Yes, I, I will say this, that having a number of clients that have skate parks and whatnot, that we really haven't seen lawsuits for, so there is some correlation that with skateboarders and recognizing that it is sort of an ultra hazardous thing to do. It's a very dangerous sport, and a lot of broken wrists and things. And we don't really see lawsuits from it. And, and there is an issue there as far as some immunity also, because it is recognized as being a hazardous activity. Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. So I would like to move authorization.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, everyone's favorite topic, water and wastewater operations. Discussion and review to establish the policy objectives for the fiscal year 2020 through 2024, rate study of the water and wastewater operations. Mr. Lilio of Finance.
We'll be making a brief presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor, city council members. So last year, we came before our city council to do an RFP for consultant services to start the rate study Prop 218 process for water and wastewater. Rafatellis was the firm that was selected from that process. Today, we're here to talk about establishing policy objectives to begin the rate study process. We're not going to dive into rates, it's more of an interactive process between the consultant who's here tonight, Sanjay from Rafatellis, he's vice president. So he'll be given the presentation and it'll be more of an interactive discussion with council on setting out some policy objectives. So I'll turn it over to you, Sanjay.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorary Mayor, city council, staff, and public. I'd like to do our presentation associated with the water and wastewater rate study. As Joe mentioned, this is an opportunity for you to provide us input. We're just getting started with the study, so I want to go over a little bit of the agenda, objectives, steps of how you do it, sort of legal environments associated with rate setting, and then get into the policies associated with financial and what are recommendations there and get your input, and then different types of rate sc, um, frame, rate structures, and then schedule. So what's the objectives? The objectives are threefold. The first is to develop a financial plan that's, that funds the operating costs, the capital costs, and develops a prudent reserve policy. We're developing a model in Excel, the model is non-proprietary, staff will have a copy of the model. They'll be, you'll be able to use the model for future updates, that's our goal and objective. The second fold is what we call cost of service. As you know, this, what we're talking about today is a fee for service, this is not a tax. Because it's a fee for service, it falls under certain legal frameworks, one of them is Prop 218, which I'll get a little bit more into. So it needs to have a rationality. The way I like to look at it is rates can't be arbitrary or capricious. We have to have a story or a narrative behind the rates and we'll work with you on that and look at your cost structure. Then we'll implement five years of rates, that's our goal. So the steps associated with the rate study, the first is the goals and objectives, what do we want to achieve? This is the opportunity, that's today's meeting, we want to get your input about that. The second step is the financial plan, sort of like a business, we're looking at your revenues, you're looking at your cost. As you know, water and wastewater is a monopoly, but, and because of that nature and because it's, falls under Prop 218, we have to look at the cost structure. So it's not a willingness to pay like a market analysis, we actually look at what's the cost to provide that service to the individual customers. So we have the financial plan, we look at the revenues that are needed, cost of service, that's that cost structure I mentioned. And then we get into rate design and we'll tell you what the impacts are with these different rate structures, how many customers will see different impacts. We'll develop what we call an administrative record, which is very important now, that really clearly justifies and shows the logic of the rate structure. I'll be the first to admit, it is tedious, it's a lot of numbers in there, but we need that just in case someone sues you. So you have that report, it's defensible, and then we have the public hearing. So the legal environment associated with rate studies, I think metaphorically think of it as a coin. One side of the coin is that we need to have a cost of service. Again, rates can be arbitrary and capricious, what's the cost to provide that service? Every agency is different, your case, you buy imported water through metropolitan via West Basin, wastewater, your collection system, part of your system does have some treatment costs. So we want to take into account all these different factors. The other side of the coin is Article 10 of our constitution, California constitution, which says that we should prohibit waste. There's some different legal views on how much which one matters more than others. Everyone agrees Prop 218 is a very important thing, we need to address that. How much Article 10 matters or not is sort of a questionable debate, but it is something important. It is, both of these are in our California constitution. So because of San Juan Capistrano, which was a group of ratepayers that sued the city over its rate structure and they won that appellate court and is citable, we need to have a logic and rationality with the rates. We need to articulate that in a report and make sure we have that publicly available. So if some concerned citizen really wants to read the report, see all the math, see how everything is calculated, we'll show you that. And right over here is an example of two cities nearby, one's Long Beach, one's Thousand Oaks, a little bit further, that shows sort of the water supply costs, how we justify tiered rates. The most good example for you would be Thousand Oaks, because Thousand Oaks have one source of supply. You have really one source of supply. So we have the cost of purchasing the water, we have the cost of delivering the water. One of the things about water, a lot of people sometimes forget about is, yes, it's free, but it's not free to have it delivered to our house 24/7, seven days, seven days, pressurized and treated. And so there's all this fixed cost, all this infrastructure that's behind that, that we need to pay for. So that's the delivery cost. We also size the system for the hottest day plus fire. So there's something we call peaking or capacity that's needed for additional, especially in the summertime, conservation program, and then the pass-through from imported water supply, you add that up. So Thousand Oaks, if you notice, the tiered rates are pretty mild, just because of the nature of their cost structure. So when we do your rate structure, I always expect something very similar, we haven't gotten there yet, but just by the nature of you having one source of supply, people don't really use much outdoor water use in the summer. It's a coastal climate, lot sizes are relatively smaller, I always expect that. So let's go into financial plan and policy discussion. So one of the things about water and wastewater, a lot of people sometimes forget is that this is the most capital intensive product there is. So if you look at all the different products out there, whether paper, pen, this computer right over here, water and wastewater has the most capital, it has the most fixed costs associated with it. And they're, and we're looking at a, a, a value of assets over 30 or 50 years. So metaphorically, I like to say, here we are, a dock wire sailing out to Catalina Island potentially. We're asking ourselves, what do we need in order to deal with an environment that we are with managing water and wastewater? Well, the first thing is very capital intensive, as I mentioned. So the capital costs are high associated with that. The second thing is capital costs fluctuate. There might be different costs that needs to occur that we didn't anticipate. You do manage also streets, so there might be opportunities where you may be fixing a street, you didn't anticipate that you're going to fix that street. So since you're fixing the street, might as well fix the mains, because you don't want to tear that road again two times or three times in one year. In addition, we have unknown liability, you're a relatively old city. So a lot of the assets that were put in the ground, think about the 1920, 1930, they weren't very well recorded. So those assets are still in the ground, they're still doing good, but they may break. And so we have some unknown liability, so it's almost like a dark closet where we really don't know what's in there, in the sense, because we're not going to go tear up the roads if it's working. The other challenge is increased regulatory demand. And that's due to conservation efforts, the state's mandating us to save. It can also do to water quality issues or, and wastewater associated. So this is the environment that your staff operates in and that you manage. Now, of course, the other side is, your, your concern is the ratepayers and what do they care about? Well, they want rate stability, nobody likes significant rate increases in the first year. Affordability is a major concern, as we all know, housing is very expensive now in Southern California. And the cost of, and there's some groups of people who are not seeing the economic boom that we're seeing right now. So they're challenged with paying the bills. And so we want to make sure somehow we can address affordability within the Prop 218 environment. Equity among your different customers, you do have some large commercial in your service area. So what's the fair rate between single family, multifamily, and commercial? And making sure we have all to address that. And then environmental stewardship, as we know, we live near the coast, environment's very important. People want to make sure we have clean water, water available for the future. So given all these challenges, what we're going to do is develop a model, we're going to work with you and make sure we meet all these different objectives. So one of the things we want to do is reserves. Reserves are very important for water and wastewater. So one of the things we want to do is reserves. Reserves are very important for water and wastewater, as I mentioned, because of the capital intensity. So there's a lot of risk inherent in this. Um, and there, it can be from revenue, from asset failure and from, um, emergencies. Um, we want a financial policy in place. We want to be, have, and there's many reasons why. The most important to me, I think is the last bullet there is transparency. So this will be in our administrative record, the reserve policies. Right now, we don't have an official reserve policy associated with water and wastewater. So we want to develop one. Why we need a certain amount of money and to deal with the risk or liability associated with the assets. So think of it metaphorically, it's almost like owning a house, a large house, but you don't know the state of some of the rooms. They're dark and you don't know what's going on. If we either have a leaky roof or not. So we want to make sure we have the money to deal with failure of assets. So different reserves, we have for different reasons. So operating reserve is a cash flow. So people use the water today. You're paying for that water right now through West Basin, through Metropolitan. They get the bill two months later. They write the check and then three months later you get the money. So through that three months period, you're cash flowing. That's the cost. So we want to have reserves to deal with the cash flow. So that's operating. That's the first one. CIP reserves, we want, in order to award a contract, you have to have the money in the bank. In addition, you want to have CIP reserve just to have flexibility. If there's a road that you're fixing or something you're doing. Might as well fix that pipe while you're tearing up the road. Again, we don't want to tear it twice. Rate stabilization to deal with drought conditions. One of the things that, you know, we met earlier today was talking about Chevron. Chevron is a large water user in your service area and they can swing between potable and recycled. And that swing can cause good things and bad things to the water system. So there might be a need to have a reserve. So that's some, one of the things that we're talking about internally to figure that out. Emergency is important. So FEMA will come, if earthquake, you know, worst case scenario, earthquake occurs. We live in earthquake environment as we know. FEMA will come in, but they're not going to cash flow the problem. So FEMA will come in, give us reimbursement, but that might be three to five years later. So we need to have the money on hand to deal with it. Now, of course, we can't assume the end of the world scenario because that would be a very large reserve target and not be too much for our ratepayers. But we need to think about what's the appropriate amount of reserves associated with that. So what I recommend date, so this is the minimum I would like to characterize. Um, and we could do more or we could leave it here and definitely we want to get your input here. And we're going to look at the financial implication of this. So I know we're not holding you to anything. But what we're recommending is two reserve targets, one for operating, which is four month, and then one year of capital reserves to have that. We could have a rate stabilization, as I mentioned, because of Chevron. We could have an emergency because of FEMA and earthquake. Some communities feel that general fund can help out with that emergency. So these are policies. These are, you know, things, some people say, no, general fund shouldn't do that. I've heard different stories behind that or different narratives. So I'm going to stop for a minute here and just maybe if you have any thoughts or questions, I can.
Where have we been historically relative to those proposed targets?
So right now you're, um, with water, you're above that. Um, so it looks like the, um, the cash balance for water looks healthy. Um, so you are easily meeting that. We could have a higher based on the, what we've looked at today. Wastewater, it looks like you're below that. If, even if you're below it, let's say wastewater, you're below it. I wouldn't recommend meeting that target tomorrow. I would recommend that we meet it over five or six years. So we slowly gradually increase the rates to do that.
Uh, uh, I would contribute that as we think through this, you know, when we did our net promoter survey in the liner notes. If not a majority, it's certainly a significant plurality of people who wrote negative comments. Were attributed to their misapprehensions about how we handle our water fund and how we assign these fees. So anything that we can do to add color, clarity or transparency to that, because that alone is something that clearly. A massive amount of our residents don't get and it looks to them exactly like what you addressed earlier on. As a money grab that goes to the general fund, even though it does not. So if we're going to lay this out, particularly if we're going to, when we go to a ballot for it. I think we need to be clear about what we're doing and if we are overshooting on water and undershooting on wastewater. People will understand that narrative as long as we are clear about it. Say this is, this is what our operation and maintenance reserve looks like and here's why. Four months equals this much money and this is what it addresses. But otherwise, if we lose them in verbiage, then we lose people very quickly. We're going to have a lot of angry people. And, 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 and look, they've been holding a grudge on this since the last time we did it. Uh, so I think it is, it is worth noting, saying that we have clearly missed the mark on explaining what we are doing and why with this process. Because we live it, right? We understand the language you're speaking, but joke, junk you voted does not because this is just something they see on their bill. So I think we need to make sure that if we're addressing this, we're addressing it in a way that we all understand and we can make sure that we are clear on the narrative about what we are doing.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
One thing to that. Yeah, if I could just add one comment to that. Um, so two of our biggest cost drivers, um, are purchasing of water. Which is completely out of our control. So, uh, we purchased it from West Basin, purchased it from, uh, Metropolitan Water District and they're looking at a six percent increase. Uh, for that. So that, that automatically gets passed on to us. We have no control of that. And then for wastewater is the treatment. Um, so for residents, it gets treated hyperion. And again, that's City of LA. They control those rates and then, you know, to send us the bill. Um, I, I don't know what they were looking, do you have any idea what that increases?
We were thinking that might be around again, six percent.
About six percent as well. Yeah, so those are two of our biggest expenditures, uh, which are completely out of our control. Just this one.
Yeah, no, I think Chris's point though, Joe, we, we get it. It's that the, the voters don't necessarily get it. And they assume that we might be making money on this and, and so I think we just need to do a better job.
I mean, we hear about it on the, the credit card service fee. I don't know how many of you guys heard, the credit card service fee on water bills is an. It, 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 it must take up twenty percent of the conversations I have with people. What is this fee and why are we being charged it? Which is a remarkable thing. Look, we have to make, break this out on a bill. We can't just bake this into your fees. We're obligated to tell you that this is what we are charging. But, but that's not the presumption we will read it. So I just want to make sure that if we are listing this out on a two eighteen, that it's not. O and M and CIP, it needs to be written out. This is what this does. This is where this money goes.
Um, so now with your rate structure, you build bimonthly. You have a tiered rate structure. Every customer has the same tier threshold. So that's the tier width. Um, whether it's residential, multifamily or commercial. You're, you have a fixed charge based on meter size, which is normal. And then you have a volumetric rates. The rates are different between single family and multifamily and non-residential. Um, this, it just shows you your rate structure that you have. So what, what, what we're going to do is we're going to visit, revisit everything. We're going to look at it, make sure it's defensible. We're going to look at the rates. So there might be some changes here. I just want to warn you right now. Um, but we're going to make sure, one of my things is that I want to make sure that if, hopefully it never occurs, but if somebody does sue the city. We have a very strong administrative record. That is very justifiable. So, which may mean some things may change. And, and not to say that what you've done in the past isn't incorrect. It's just that there's new information now available. The tiered rate structures are shown right here. Again, we're going to work with you. We're going to come up with a logic why. Single family has a different rate structure than maybe multifamily. Again, with commercial, we want to have a narrative or story behind this. Again, you have one source of supply. So most likely the rate structures I'll be proposing won't be as aggressive as tiers as these are, a little bit more flatter. Yes.
The lifeline, that's kind of a universal standard, right? And, and to qualify means what again?
So the lifeline, you have a lifeline program right now that, um, you, you qualify through the care program. That's what you do. I am going to talk about that a little bit more and, and so maybe I can hold off on that.
Yeah, because I had a question about, you know, within our policy considerations, could we reward? Not reward, but to give people that are on lower income or certain affordability a different rate. And I know that attempts to get at that, but I just don't remember what the parameters are.
Yeah, the parameter, you have a, right over here, you do, there is a lifeline rate, um, for the one inch and three fourths in right there. You qualify by the care program and Joe's going to correct me if I say anything correct. Um, you have a source of funding associated with that. Um, and one of the things that we want to do is, is revisit that lifeline program to make sure it falls under Prop two eighteen and it's defensible.
You could have multiple tiers too, right? We wouldn't have to necessarily rely just on lifeline, right?
You could have a, a rate structure that addresses affordability that everyone benefits from. By having like, for instance, a two tiered rate structure where tier one is for indoor needs and tier two is outdoor. And then we can try it within the Prop two eighteen framework. Make sure that's low as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a dumb question? It's a little bit of a sideline. Why, why do we use the, the, the unit measures we do? Like, why do we use hundred cubic feet of water?
I have no idea.
Why don't we just call it, what is it? Eight hundred gallons? How much is a hundred cubic feet?
Yeah, seven forty-eight.
Seven forty-eight. Why don't, I mean, people use gallons, right?
It, it.
This is what loses people, right?
Correct.
We're talking acre foot.
Yeah, it, uh, you're, I, I don't, I mean, uh, someone who's done, who's doing this for twenty years, I still don't know why we do a hundred cubic feet. Um, um, some communities do, uh, other parts of the country, they actually do thousand gallons. And so there's a lot of discussion about trying to get to at least a hundred gallons. Because if you charge a hundred gallons, then the rates would be actually like, um, for thirty cents or forty cents. Which is a great thing to say to people, but then you have to change your meter, meter system, the billing system, and that's going to be very expensive. So. So one of the things that we want to talk about is sort of the balancing act with rates. There's different goals and objectives. One of the things we could do is have a rate structure that lots of revenue stability, basically cover all your fixed charge on the meter. Um, what would that do though? Is the meter charge will go up significantly and maybe go up to forty or fifty dollars for a residential. Um, the commodity rate will be what you buy from West Basin. It doesn't necessarily address the affordability concern. As we talked about early about having a tiered rate structure. So there's a balancing act here about what is the most appropriate rate structure? And this is where we want to get your input and we have some ideas of what we want to do. It's important to know that rates have evolved and changed over time. And this is more informational wise, you know, the, there are rate structures still in California where it's flat, similar to like. Um, people don't have much cable anymore. So everyone has Netflix, but in the sense that it, you pay a certain amount and you can use as much water. So that's, um, a flat rate structure. And there's pros and cons with these and you have this presentation too. Um, you can also have a rate structure that's uniform, which is a very common rate structure around one third of the rates in, uh, rate structures in California have that kind of rate structure. Again, different pros and cons with these different rates. Then we have tiered rates, seasonal rates. That's higher in the summer, low in the winter, more common in the Pacific Northwest where the water supply changes actually. Um, and then the, 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 the next rate structure is an inclining tiered rate structure, which is what you have right now. And this kind of rate structure promotes conservation, has affordability, easy to administer. Your system can do that, easy to understand. Your customers know it. And by design, it targets larger users, which is good and bad. Some people say that's great because you use a lot more water, you get paid more, but that person may actually be relative, need that kind of water, given the lot size or large family size. Other rate structures out there, which we're not, um, necessarily going to be looking at in this one are these access to use rates where the tier width is based on average winter use. Um, more novel. And then the last one is what we call water budget rate structure, which is more common in Orange County area. Uh, where you have larger lots and where people are looking at targeting efficiency standards. Most likely what we'll be looking at, given the, the, the community and given discussion is either a uniform rate structure or a planning tiered rate structure. And we'll be presenting that later on. So goals and objectives. So we've worked with staff and these are the goals and objectives that we've identified. Revenue stability, perceived equity fairness, affordability, conservation, administration and simplicity. And so this is, I want to take a break here now and just ask you, is there anything here? And you can always come back and, you know, tell, um, Joe and he can tell me. Is there anything else you see here as an objective policy you think we should be addressing the study? Is there a concern that you've heard? I know I'm putting you on the spot, so if you want to come back to us, you can. Um, but is there anything you think we're missing here? Or something that's wrong?
Well, I think. Conservation, I don't know that it's well known that there's an incentive to reduce consumption. Um, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I'm guessing most people don't fully understand how the rate structure works. Unless there's one person that sent, sends us letters, like he studied this, you know, long and hard and he has. Fruit trees, et cetera, but I think most people don't understand it. And so whatever we do around conservation, assuming that remains one of our principles, I think we need to do a better job. Back to Councilman Pimentel, Pimentel's, uh, point about educating.
Yeah.
Same thing with simplicity. I mean, it is too difficult to discern what you're really spending, but if we had a X cents per gallon. Or whatever it is, or X cents per hundred gallons that a family could understand. And by the way, if you consume. This much less or you get under this threshold, it goes down to eight cents or whatever. I mean, something really easily understandable for people, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I agree. I think your simplicity and conservation are, are inextricably tied together on this chart. The more people understand it, the easier it is for them to make changes that affect them financially or, or, or whatever, ethically, whichever their motivation is.
Yeah, how much do we pay for a gallon of gas? I don't know, because I have an electric car, but you guys probably know.
Well, zing.
Entirely too much.
Sorry, Elon. Um. But, uh, no, but to that point, terminology, I mean, the nice thing about gas, right? It's, it's a lot easier. People understand a gallon of gas than a kilowatt hour, right? More people speak those two things, uh, no matter how many vanity tags there are. Uh, but. Uh, so somebody that, that equates to their cents per gallon on this, even if we, as a term of art, are using water terms, whether it's acre foot or, or a hundred cubic feet. If it puts it in terms of gallons and how many are using and those sorts of thresholds, then you will see people make material changes because they can see how they affect that. You know, explaining to people, you know, how many kilowatt hours they use doesn't always jive any, any greater than acre foot would.
Yeah, I think you're hitting all the objectives. Uh, me personally, I've never been a fan of the tier system. I think the tier system inadvertently. Uh, penalizes larger families. It, it may be physically impossible for them not to hear, hit tier two. If they have natural turf and they have five to six people living in a house, uh, even if they're showering together. You know, or reusing the same water in a bath. It's just, I, I've never understood that. I thought, well, water should cost what it costs, no matter how many gallons I use. If I'm a conservant and use less, then it's going to cost me less. But I've never understood why I hit tier two and then all of a sudden I'm paying, you know, two dollars more. Per just, it's, and not, not as a, you know, heavy user, but just, hey, it's a, it's a family. So.
Okay.
When you do your study for rates, with, I presume that you can, you can extrapolate some data from that about how, how to assign the tier level is based upon. Average water use rates in the winter. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. So we would either do a two fold. One is, um, look at average winter use. The other one is to assume a certain household size and then a gallon per capita per day. So the standard is if you use four people, fifty-five gallons, you build monthly, that's nine units. That's one approach. Now that assumes that the household's four, might not necessarily, might be more, might be less. But we'll look at the average winters. I suspect once we get into the data, that people's average winter use and summer use are not. That much difference. I mean, there might, of course, there'll be some increase, but it's going to be pretty mild. So that means to me that the rates, even if we had tier rates, it'd be pretty mild. More inland you go or, you know, warmer it is, then you'll have more, more reasons to have aggressive tiers because of the infrastructure needs.
And one of the things that, um, the recent cases, the San Juan Capistrano case, the City of Palmdale case. Have focused on sort of the issue that, um, Councilmember Nicol has raised and we have to work towards. Um, having the tiers match up with the actual cost. We have to be able to show that. Going beyond a certain amount of consumption actually triggers additional cost. And, and conservation, just as a motivation itself, is not sufficient according to these court rulings. And so it's. There, there's, it's a different landscape to some extent than what we've been dealing with in the past.
Well, the other thing I want to point out too is you build a new home in town and typically you're bringing in a two inch water line. To a new home with four bathrooms, whereas your home, potentially because it was built years ago, has a one or a one and a half inch line. The difference between a one and a half inch line coming into the house and a two inch line, it's a double, it's more than double the cost. And that's without using a drop of water. That's just to have the pipe that city didn't pay for. To come to your house from your property line to your house, just for it to just be at the meter. That's what it's costing you and you had, you didn't use any water.
What, what's the rationale behind that?
So there's, um, a couple of things. First, so remember we, we designed, we really pay water, think of like the old. We used to think of water as a commodity, right? And it is a commodity, but it's also a service. So we're paying for that service to, the ability to use water twenty-four seven, seven days a week and that water is pressurized and clean. And so we, a lot of times we take that for granted and, and, you know, a good way to not take that for granted is go to a country where it's not available. And then you really realize, oh my God, you know, this is amazing, but we have this facility. So, so there's a lot of cost behind that. The other reason why meters are larger or getting upsized for new development is where the fire sprinklers. So a lot of, um, there's a, a new state law where after a certain size of the house, it automatically bumps up. So I suspect a lot of the new development her, happening in your service area, um, they're getting replaced from a five and three fourth inch to a one inch. Or maybe even a one and a half inch, depending on how many stores that. inch, depending on how many stores, floors they go up. And so there's a fire requirement associated with that. And so this is one of the discussion items that we'll be talking about with staff, and we could be also with you, is who should pay for that fire service? So definitely the property owner benefits from it, right? Because by having a sprinkler, now my property's safe, so that's a benefit, and also my insurance will be lower. But there's also a benefit from the neighbors, right? And the neighbors benefit by, all of a sudden, now your fire's gone. So we need to discuss, what's the appropriate rate if you have a larger meter for fire service, for the fire sprinkler? This is some of the discussion that we need to discuss.
By virtue of having a, a larger pipe, clearly my, my older home with my non-electric car, I'm a whipping boy for, like, nineteen seventy-four just rolled in. But by, just by virtue of having a two-inch pipe, that doesn't necessarily mean you're using more water, right?
No, but you have the capacity to use a lot more.
But you don't.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in that example...
They're charging for potential energy, not kinetic energy.
I can use, so, in that example, let's say, for instance, your home had a smaller water pipe than my home, let's just say, for, for...
While we're in the bag with our flint and steel and kindling and tanning squirrels.
I can use half the amount of water as you, and your bill would likely be less than mine because of the cost to, just because of the line cost.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we brought up, you know, planning, building, safety, and said, hey, what's, you know, a requirement, and what are we putting, what are we requiring homes to have now? They're gonna say, oh, well, this is what we require, and it's for fire suppression sprinklers, it's, you know, it's anything over three bathrooms, three toilets, and you need this. And, and so it's that upfront cost just to get the water to the house without using a drop.
Yeah.
And it's the pressure, so, I mean, the concept is, you could, I mean, you mostly will never happen, but let's say you have a Super Bowl party at your house, everyone's over, and everyone's using the toilet at the same time, and someone wants to take a shower, and for whatever reason, the kids are outside, and there's, I know it's January or February, but they're having a sprinkler system on too. You have enough pressure for all that to occur.
I guess, the way I always look at things, though, is today, it's, you know, twenty-twenty. Twenty years from now, thirty years from now, many of the homes in this town are well over a hundred years old. Many, like, in many communities, you will see a turnover, and you'll see homes redeveloped. And then at some point, the norm, so, I guess the bigger question is, can our water system, as we move forward, continue to provide pressure if every, every residence in town had a larger pipe being delivered to it? And, and though, for this study, what I'm curious to see is if we can justify that, that increased cost for, you know, the pipe being, you know, an eighth of an inch larger. Like, how can we justify that cost? Like, does it cost us that much more to pressurize it? Did we change our system to accommodate one or two more houses coming online with a larger pipe? That's where I don't, I don't see how our cost to deliver the water to that residence changed.
Yeah. And there's, I mean, and it's the, it's the metaphor I like to give is bandwidth. So I don't know if you remember the old days when we had a modem and that sound, and you would call in and you would download, and you would slowly get stuff, right? So, and now, you know, you can have different speed for your, at home, right? And so that's the size of the pipe, is, you know, you want more water, then you want a bigger bandwidth, and you pay a lot more, so that you can, so you can have four streaming of TV occurring in your house, everyone can have their device and use it. Or are you willing to have a smaller download speed, then you can have a smaller meter?
The only problem with that analogy is you're talking about a luxury item versus something that is protected by 218, which is supposed to be a, what does it cost you to provide that?
Correct.
To the residents?
Yeah. Okay. So we're gonna address that, so I'm not, but not today. Today, we're talking about policy and sort of just bigger picture. So wastewater discussion. So wastewater, you are pretty much a collect, so you have two sides of the house, everyone's a collection system. One side of the house is, everyone gets a treatment cost, but some people get the treatment on the county property roll, if you get it from the county side. The LA city actually bills you directly, the city El Segundo, and then you bill the customer. So one side of the community is billed, the other side's billed through the property roll. You have, I'll be first to admit this, a little bit of a complicated rate structure on wastewater. You have a volumetric, you have a monthly treatment cost, then you have this monthly wastewater fee to deal with this issue that was talked about, where the west side is the one that's served by LA Hyperion, and that's that cost I was talking about. And the rates are, you know, you know, we're gonna work with you on developing rates, because you have different unit rates for single-family, multifamily. Again, this is what's going into the wastewater, it's not the outdoor, it's the inside, so, you know, and, and this is really just collection. So the collection cost should be relatively the same for all these communities. You also have it by meter size here. Again, we're gonna work with staff and come up with a logic why this makes sense or why it wouldn't make sense. You also have this wastewater fee service, so you have a lot, a lot of, it's a lot of complexity. And so one of the things we're gonna do is simplify it, have a simple story to explain the rates, so understand what people pay for. So policy discussion, lifeline program. So, with, within Prop 218, we can't use rates to subsidize other customers. So we have to identify another source of revenue that doesn't fall into Prop 218. Right now, we're using interest income to fund the program, so we want to look at other forms of revenues. We'll work with staff and your attorney to make sure we come up with an appropriate amount. The next thing is, what should we discount? What my recommendation would be is to discount the fixed charge component, so the variable's still there, so people do use a lot of water, they will still pay for that, so it encourages conservation, but the, the fixed component gets reduced. And we would recommend you use the same program for people to participate, which is the care program for the electricity. So someone already qualifies for the care program, they show the bill, there's not administrative costs, you don't need to get everyone's taxes or any information about them, they just need to show you the bill. Next thing is pass-through. As Joe mentioned, on the water side, you do buy all your water from West Basin, which is a significant cost that goes through Metropolitan. That is a cost that you can't control over. So one of the things that we do with this prop, so we're recommending to do five years of rate adoption eventually, when we'll present that to you. And one of the challenges is, is my crystal ball on the increase that Metropolitan will have isn't that great. I have an idea, but things can change. And so if they go up much more or much less, I'll be off. And so one approach is that we could do a pass-through, so we can show the rates of your costs, and then we can tell the citizens that when Metropolitan increases its rates, which gets implemented in January, we would automatically do a pass-through. This is a common practice, Thousand Oaks, for instance, does this. We would recommend that we do this. Now, it helps with revenue stability, it minimizes financial risk. One of the things that some customers will complain about, and you will hear this, is the lack, they will say it's a lack of transparency, because in the Prop 218 notice, we don't say explicitly what the rates are, because we don't know what the rates are. What, the way to handle that situation is, is when you do do the increase, you would have a meeting, and you would tell everyone an opportunity to communicate what the increases will be. But you've already adopted it, so you wouldn't have to do a noticing requirement again. Same thing on the wastewater side, we would want to do that for the Hyperion, but that would be only one part of your city that would get affected by that. The other part doesn't get affected because they get billed directly on the property roll. So I wanted to know if this is a concern, this lack of transparency? Some cities I've worked with say yes, some say no, I'm okay with that. There's, I think there's ways to address the transparency challenges by communicating and letting people know about it up ahead. So you do the five years of adoption, and then each time you know what the rate increases are, you would notify customers, you could put an insert in the bill, you could have a meeting, but you've already gone through the legal requirement of Prop 218.
I would concur with what you said, assuming that it's communicated proactively and through different mediums, and just ad nauseam almost with a huge call-out, probably in the bill in bright red, that this is a pass-through cost and that we are, we have no control over them, and they're, by the way, they're, you know, basing their pricing on the same cost model that we, that we have to subscribe to.
It's big red letters, this is what it costs the city to buy this water. We are charging you the same amount that we pay to get it. With an underline, all caps. That letter.
Okay. Schedule-wise, we had the meeting in the summer, we're meeting today on the financial framework. We're gonna be coming back in May nineteenth to go over the financial plan associated with these two enterprises. Then I'll be coming back, showing you rates in June sixteenth. We will also most likely show you rates in May nineteenth, June sixteenth, we'll show you again rates. Once you've said, yeah, that looks roughly right, or there's no concerns, you're not gonna adopt them, you're just gonna let me know if you have any concerns, significant concerns, then we'll develop our administrative report. That's that document I said, it will be tedious, it will be long, it'll be a hundred pages. But that's that report, again, that where someone who's very interested, they can read it, we would want you to have that on your website, on the counter, it'll be publicly available, I can sign reports of it if people are interested. So that will be available on August fourth, and then we do public outreach, and then we have the, we're planning to have the notice, the public hearing October sixth. That's where, if you don't have more than fifty percent of the people who, property owners or ratepayers, more than fifty percent protest, then the city council could consider the adoption of that. So you wouldn't do a ballot, you just, it's a passive, I don't know what the right word here. Mark, you wanna help me out?
Well, what we do in the practices is, we send out protest ballots to all of the property owners and to the ratepayers, because they're not always the same, sometimes they're renters, and, and pretty explicit what they need to do if they want to protest it and return it by a certain date, and that, that's the process we've used.
And if we, long as we don't get, we get under fifty percent, then city council can consider the adoption, and then we would have that meeting. And then the rates would be effective most likely January first of twenty-twenty-one. So next step is finish, finalize the financial model, as I mentioned, that's Excel, it'll be a deliverable for staff, do the cost of service rate design, we got your input, you'll mostly give us further input, and then the city council workshop. And that's it. Any other questions you may have? All right, thank you.
Okay, we're on to reports. First up is the city clerk.
So, we have this little election coming up. But I just wanted to let you know that we have the seven vote centers, and the one at Center Street is the one that will be open for the ten days, and that begins February twenty-second, so you can vote at Center Street, starting February twenty-second. And the other six will begin on the twenty-sixth, and then, of course, the official date is March third. Any questions? Go ahead.
Good, thank you, that's great. City treasurer, we already heard from them, that department, Councilmember Pimentel.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Nicol.
I just wanted to mention that we had five applicants for one position on the Arts and Culture Committee today. With all five people being wonderful applicants, I just think that it speaks volumes to where our city is in regards to the willingness of the residents of town and employees of this town, who don't necessarily live here, wanting to get involved, wanting to donate their time to just add value to the community that we all call home. I'm, I'm just thoroughly impressed, and I just wanted to, I mean, Krista's gone now, but something that jumped out at me on that page was when she took over, there was thirty million saved, and now there's eighty-two million dollars saved. And, you know, I know we have looming financial issues, but wow, you know, it, it feels good to know that we have that, that fallback. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protam.
All I just have is I want to remind people that on Wednesday, on February twenty-sixth at five PM is the dog clinic for people to get their dog's rabies shots and their board, you know, their other shots at a discounted price, and it's a good time to ensure that you are getting your dog's license. So that's at the City Yard on May twenty-sixth, uh, February twenty-sixth at five PM.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just a quick reminder that March eleventh marks our annual State of the City, it's gonna be held at seven-seven-seven Aviation, which is a vacant building that seemed to have some really stellar tenants in there, and we're shooting for, I don't know where Barbara is, still five hundred? Well, we're shooting for a big number.
We're at three hundred right now.
We're at three hundred already, which would be, means we're on track to beat last year's number, which is great. And that's it, that's all I have for this evening. City attorney.
Nothing, sir, the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and city manager.
A few things, you mentioned the State of the City, we are working on the metrics for the mayor's performance for that evening.
Good thing it's a lunch.
Yeah, and lunch, sorry, sorry. My attempt at humor, I don't get too many opportunities, thank you for your indulgence. So, by the way, a follow-up, the police chief has communicated with me, he'll have the clearance rates by crime type information, we'll do that through a memo and share that with the city council. Appreciate that, that was a good discussion. Thank you for your indulgence on a lot of items tonight, a lot, a lot of good progress. I do, the next meeting, it'll be on March third, we'll come back with the short-term rental stuff, as we talked about, and we'll have a few public hearings, one, two separate public hearings on two Smoky Hollow development projects, and I think that's still a go, right, for those two projects. We have a cleanup item with one of the unions, very minor thing, and then Waypoint Affordable Housing. We went to the Planning Commission earlier, last week, it all blends together, I'm sorry, and now we're, their recommendation's coming to the city council. And then in addition to that, we will be having a staff presentation seeking authorization to do an RFP for a housing services manager, services, to manage the affordable housing projects going forward in the community. And then the tech committee will be giving an update report. Councilmembers have asked if we have the committees come in periodically to provide updates on what they're doing, so, only fitting that we do the tech committee, given the website transition. All right, and then finally, some good news, I'd like to point out, you might notice behind me on the wall, you see those five-frame artwork, that's from the, where are my notes here, the Boiling Point Creative Projects, you're all aware of it, the, the five images of El Segundo, so we, one is of the water tower, the beach, downtown clock, the high school, and the city's commitment to aerospace. So we thought, as we spruce up the room, that we have stuff on the wall that celebrates El Segundo. Couldn't think of a better thing than what's behind me. All right, that's it, by the way, a follow-up, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and, let's see, public communications. Seeing none. What's that? Should we call Dr. Brand now that we've made it four hours? Oh, oh, yes, Councilmember Nicol reminded me that the Ed Foundation Guys Night Out is this, no, a week, a week from Saturday, is it this Saturday?
This Saturday.
At, is it still at the same place, the, what's it called now?
Beach, Beach City Baseball.
Beach City Baseball Academy, okay. Get your tickets, you guys sold out yet? Okay, great event. With that, we are adjourned, ten oh two PM, thank you.